Evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones. And be aware that these meetings are being recorded. If you desire to speak and you are here with us tonight, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each resident that is here or one that joins us via Zoom will be given three minutes to speak. Are we having Zoom meetings tonight? We do. Okay, I don't have the invitation. That's okay. I'll go without. All right, so we have a special presentation for tonight. But we will get to that as soon as we have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation. So tonight, our invocation will be given by Mayor Pro Tem, Bill Hesse. And if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Well, I just want to thank you for everything you've done for this city. Lord, I just ask that you be with this council tonight and give us wisdom and guidance to be your will, God. God, I just pray for our residents here, that you be with them, our upcoming seniors who are graduating, that you just protect them and keep them safe, you know, we had the prom and now a lot of the graduation ceremonies, God, and you just be with them in their future. Lord, I ask that you be with our first responders and protect them always and keep them home, let them come home safe. And Lord, just be with their businesses in the city of Grand Terrace, God. I ask them to be with our staff and protect them. And Lord, we just thank you. Thank you for everything. We love you, Jesus, and just may you protect them.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a new employee introduction.
Madam Mayor, shall I call roll? Shall I call roll?
Roll call.
Oh, actually, no, wait. We have one more special presentation, but you want to do roll call first?
Yes, ma'am.
May we have roll call?
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem Hesse.
Present.
And Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
We have new employer introduction, Trevor Greeley, finance technician.
Your Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, we'd like to introduce to you Trevor Greeley. He's a accounting technician and he's already paying big dividends and is allowing us to catch up, and he's catching on quickly. And he is a Grand Terrace resident, which is even better than that. So Trevor, I want to say hello.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. My name is Trevor Greeley. I was just hired on a couple of weeks ago, and so far, I've been loving my job here. I've been loving all the people I work with, serving the great city of Grand Terrace. A little history about myself, I worked at Auto International out in Ontario for three years in their accounting department before I came over here, more or less along the same lines of work that I'm doing here. So I was able to come in and make an immediate impact, which I am very happy to be able to do. Maybe just a little bit more about myself. My hobbies include golfing, fantasy football. You know, I'm a big old nerd, love Marvel, Star Wars, things like that nature. So I'm always open to have any fun discussions, conversations about any of that, if you'd like to swing by. And I want to thank you so much for having me. I've been really blessed with this opportunity, and I'm going to make the most of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and our next presentation will be by Ms. Van Kampen, on behalf of the DMV Donate Life. Would you like to come forward? Okay. Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Susan, and I'm a ambassador for one day a week. I have the trifecta of four donations. When I was younger, about thirty years ago, I was fortunate enough to have a bone graft later on. I would raise my kids, and even take care of my parents and my teachers, and soccer and all of that. And then about age of three, unfortunately, my dad ended up on dialysis, and I became a living donor around that time. And then also, unfortunately, we all got those on two-year diet, we also became children apparently because we were able to donate. And then just to save something else, it's quite a time. So it's National Donation Life Month, and this Saturday, Team SoCal, which is the team representing Southern California for the Catholic Games of America, which are going to be here this end of the year, but this time, we'll be having a celebration of life in Rollins Park at 12:30. If anyone wants to stop by and say hello or join in.
Thank you. All right, so our official plaque will read, "City of Grand Terrace Proclamation, DMV/Donate Life California. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 20,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day waiting. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. Whereas organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever. Whereas any person can register to be an eye, organ, tissue donor, regardless of age or medical conditions. Whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. Whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online anytime by visiting www.donatelifecalifornia.org. For Spanish speakers, www.donvidaCalifornia.org. Whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy Magna Bo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, proclaim the month of April 2021? Should be 2022. As DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Grand Terrace, and encourage all licensed California to check yes online when applying for our renewing their driver's license and ID card. Presented this day of, well, it says April 2021. I think we need to get you a new plaque. What do you think? Yeah. Okay, but we're going to do a photo op anyway, and then we'll get you an updated one, all right? If I could have the council join me, and will you please join me? I'm lost, sorry. My seats are being shaded around again. Huh? Well, they're adjusted back. All right. Next, we will have Yoan Gallo up to the lecture, maybe making a presentation. And it says consent calendar items are intended to be routine and non-controversial, and they'll be acted upon by the City Council at one time. However, Mr. Gallo, please come forward.
Ahead of you.
Yeah, you're still sitting over here in my mind. Sorry about that.
It's not often I get to dress up, so.
And this poor man's like, I don't have anything to say.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of the council. Tonight, I'm here to honor and present several certificates of appreciation on behalf of Mrs. Kathy Williams Braxton with Sick and Tired Sobriety Home, and John Braxton on behalf of the Community and Unity Church. They wanted to thank Mayor Magna Bo, the council members, for their support, and acknowledge Councilmember Hesse for the work that he did with the Toy Drive Committee. They also want to express their appreciation for the entire city staff that worked on this, including the work that was done with the Grand Terrace Foundation to make this event possible, and it was truly a collective effort of everyone in the city staff and council and mayor. We have a special thank you to Lieutenant Lane and Deputy Carlson for the tremendous support they gave for the cruise route while doing rolling traffic breaks and everything that they could possibly do to make the event run smoothly, and it made it safer for everyone. So we do have a certificate to present to Lieutenant Lane.
Oh, very nice.
On behalf of the County, San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, as well as for the City of Grand Terrace Sheriff's Department. So we'll do that in a minute. We also want to thank, and I'm sorry to see that Assistant Fire Chief, he is not here tonight, but we also have a certificate for him for providing the fire engine that took Santa Claus around for the kids to see. And they didn't want to go without recognizing the support that they got from the Lions Club, the Boy Scouts, Santa, of course, and the businesses and everyone that participated. This was truly a citywide event, and it couldn't have happened without everybody's support. They sincerely appreciate everyone's involvement in the second Grand Terrace Cars and Coffee Santa Claus Toy Drive that supports their charities and toy giveaways to the families in need at Christmas time. Through the collective efforts of everyone involved, they collected so many toys that children received four to five toys as opposed to one and two in the past, not to mention they didn't have to turn any families away this year. Families received the toys, bags of food courtesy of Grocery Outlet and other venues that provided support for this event. They had medical and dental checkups for families at their event. And the good news is, based on the support that the Braxtons have seen from the City of Grand Terrace, they are now moving it to Rollins Park, and they are going to be working with the city staff and work through all the things that need to be done to make this event, great event, happen at Rollins Park on Saturday, December 17. Our third annual Grand Terrace Cars and Coffee Santa Claus Toy Drive is already planned. We're working on all the details, and we appreciate the work that Conrad is doing to make this a much easier process than last year. So with that, we are tentatively scheduling Friday, December 9, to support the charities, and we'll be working with the city staff to accomplish this, along with asking Lieutenant Lane and Assistant Fire Chief for their continued support. Now, I'd like to make the presentations of the certificates.
Okay.
The first one, obviously, to the mayor and city council for all their support. The next one, without further ado, San Bernardino Sheriff's Department and Grand Terrace Sheriff's Department. So I have two. We'll get the one to Assistant Fire Chief Mahia and present it maybe at the next one he's available. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all your hard work and letting us, and coming here to celebrate with us. That's wonderful. All right, so also on here, we have the discussion about the consent calendar items, and they're expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they'll be acted upon by the City Council at one time without, without any discussion, but any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar. Are there any requests for removal of consent calendar? Okay. So we need a motion for the consent calendar, then.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Robles. Do we have a second? Councilmember Allen? May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Thank you.
Motion passed unanimously.
And then lastly, we have... Onto the next thing. All right.
Mayor, this is the appropriate time for public comment. This is the appropriate time for public comment on items not on the agenda.
But before that, on my agenda, I have approved National Air of American Heritage Month proclamation and certification of recognition of Victoria Bacon. No, that's the next one. I'm sorry. I'm having trouble reading this today. I am so sorry. Okay, so lawful reading of ordinances on the agenda is actually our first item of business.
Madam Mayor? So council, excuse me, consent items are one through eight, which we just approved. Those are all of those items on that page. And then we're on Agenda Item D for public comment, which would be page four, or actually on your page, probably page two.
Page... Come here and let, show me what, let me show you what you put in front of me. I'll have to look at different formatting next time. My apologies. All right, so beginning with item number three. We will begin our consent calendar. So we did vote on the consent calendar, but they start right after the... So we took care of the consent calendar. And now we're down. That makes more sense. Voting a waived reading does not make sense. Thank you for correcting me. We'll move on to new business. Grand Terrace High School Senior Parade. City Manager Conrad Bolowich.
We do not have any public comments, so we can move on.
Yeah, I'm into new business.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, thank you. Are we ready for the slides? I need my notes so I can remember what we're talking about. We're just here to discuss the senior parade for high school seniors, Grand Terrace High School, and I'm looking for a direction from the council of one way or another on how to proceed with this. So as a background, in 2020 and 2021, due to COVID, the high school did not have any graduation ceremonies. In 2020, there was a spontaneous parade that students and parents put together, 2021. The city sponsored the parade. The sheriff's department donated their time and effort to manage the street closures and the traffic. This year, however, the school is back to normal operations. There aren't typical normal graduation ceremonies going on. However, we did have a group of parents that approached us and asked if we would be willing to work with them on sponsoring a parade for the seniors. The reason this is before you is because since we are getting back into normal years, if we do this this year, that probably raises the expectation that this is going to be an annual event for the city and the cost and sponsorship associated with that. So the parade route, the parents worked with Lieutenant Lane. It was a fairly complicated route previously. The current route starts at Richard Rollins Park and will go down Mount Vernon to Main and end up at the high school so that the seniors can engage with the regular senior activities scheduled for that day. It requires five traffic control sites where officers or public works employees will need to station to manage traffic and to coordinate to make sure that the route runs safely. There's a fairly extensive list of rules as far as what is and isn't allowed and the expectations from the students that I think we can work with. And then the final and the biggest part is the cost of putting this on. So the city cost for our public works people and for the internal activities is about $1,800. The sheriff's cost for overtime is about $3,800, and the group will need to purchase a liability insurance. They can do that through JPIA and the city for about $1,000. So the total cost is somewhere in the range of $6,600 that when we met with the group, we said we would be glad to work with them and waive our special permit, special events permit fee, but they would need to pay the hard costs for this event. The direction, the direction from the council is, is this something that you want the city to be paying for, or is this something that we do need to have the parents and the students and the school pay for, if there's some equitable split for that? You know, with the, these are costs, especially the insurance is a cost that somebody has to pay for that policy. And the sheriffs, you know, while they were very accommodating in the last couple of years, they are going to charge us for their overtime, which is justifiable. They got to pay their guys for that, too. So I am, I am open to hear recommendation and direction from council. Thank you.
Thank you. You originally said that the price was like $3,800 for the professional fees, and then I heard a thousand, or was it 11,000?
A thousand for insurance and 1,800 for the city costs. So we have our own overtime cost for public works people and our staff, and then $3,800 cost for the sheriff's overtime.
Okay, and so that's where you came up with the 6,600?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's an estimate right now.
Councilmember Robles.
I was curious, who is this group? Are they recognized by any organized entity, meaning the school district, or PTA, or Booster Club?
Actually, I have one of the parents here, and if you're okay with it, maybe she can answer some of those questions, if that's all right.
Are you thinking Community Benefits Fund? Hello, Mrs. Bull.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I am Christy Bull. I'm a resident here of Grand Terrace, and I have children in our district, and I've served on a number of boards and volunteer commitments for the city and the schools. You asked Ms. Robles, Councilmember Robles, if we had a group from the PTA or the school. At this point, we are parents trying to organize this. I've been asked, and by my own ambition, I've decided to take this on myself, and I have a team that would help. In past years, the past two years, it has also been parents that volunteer for this, although I do have the extreme support from the high school as well. But it's not a city event, or I'm sorry, a school event. It has nothing to do with the district, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, the other question I have, because I had a senior granddaughter last year, and she was at my home between her break for RCC, and it was the feeling like in absence of a commencement, the parade was an excellent choice. But with a commencement, the focus kind of goes to the commencement and back to the normal things of grad... So the issue that I'm weighing is, do we spend all this money and we don't have the participation we're looking for? And that kind of thing. And who's, because like school fees or graduation fees pay for a lot of the costs of the school district on those. So those were the questions and concerns I had.
Okay, absolutely. While our seniors this year have not been as terribly affected by the pandemic as the previous two school classes, our seniors have still been affected. But what we found is that this was a well-celebrated event for the seniors and for our community. So although our seniors this year are still having graduation, they're having prom, it is still an excellent way to celebrate those students for their achievements, and it is a wonderful community event. I forget the rest of your question, I'm sorry. I think you were asking if we would have the participation.
Right.
My anticipation is to do like an Eventbrite-type registration so that I could register my original thought, and with Lieutenant Lane, we were, well, I don't, and also the city manager, maximum of 100 cars. If that is feasible, and if that's a limit that you would like to put on it, absolutely, I think that that's a good number. What I would do is have an event registration so that our seniors have to register to be in the parade. This would give me a better idea after, say, two weeks of registration. I would know exactly where we're at. So if 10 seniors decide that they want to participate, there's going to be 10 cars, then I would come back to the city manager and say, it just doesn't look like it's worth the expense. then I would come back to the city manager and say, it just doesn't look like it's worth the expense. However, if it's something that we have a wonderful turnout, which I expect we would, because we've may, been able to align this with the senior sunset dinner through the city, through the, uh, high school, I feel like we actually would have a wonderful turnout. And in fact, we would have more students that live in Colton that attend Grand Terrace High School because they would be coming to the high school already for the senior sunset.
Well, and, and that was one of my questions, too, because it's the Colton Unified School District, which means there's other students from the unincorporated area of the county and also the city of Colton. So have you asked for those entities to participate in the cost?
The city of Colton, no, I haven't, because it's not a school function. Um, I have intentionally tried to avoid getting the district involved because it, I would rather it be a city function where we, as the city of Grand Terrace, celebrate our youth. Uh, the city of Colton already has a number of events that they have for, for Colton High School. And so we kind of leave that up to them and their discretion. So they have the homecoming parade. They have a, I believe, already a senior parade. They have a number of parades in their city.
Well, yeah, but what, my point is Grand Terrace is part of the Unified School District and Grand Terrace High School is not just limited to Grand Terrace students.
Correct.
Right.
So you mean to go to the city of Colton and ask them for a portion of those funds? Is that what you mean?
Right.
Okay, no, I have not done that.
And then when is graduation this year?
June first.
Okay.
So it would be the Thursday prior to the actual graduation. Friday is senior checkout day. And I actually wrote, um, kind of a little speech that might give you a lot more information if you would like me to read it.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Bear with me because I'm not a good speaker, but. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. As a longtime resident of Grand Terrace, mom to children raised in the district and an avid volunteer for our community and three other local schools, I come to the city council this evening in hopes of coordinating our third annual GTHS Senior Parade. I have served on many boards and serve groups and service groups in this community and three of our Grand Terrace schools. I love this little town and I don't plan to stop anytime soon. Myself, as well as anyone on my team, give one hundred percent commitment to the success and safety of any event we are involved in. Safety is of the utmost importance. Since I first met with our city manager, Mr. Conrad Bolowich, and learned of the expense to have an event such as this, it seemed that it would be impossible to put on this year. Understandably, there is a need for sheriff patrol and escort for the event for several reasons. However, the cost was estimated at six thousand thirty-six dollars, worth every penny, but too rich for my blood. I had already done a community outreach to help seniors that could not afford tickets for grad night, prom and senior inspiration. We had an amazing turnout. Our community is very generous and came together, but I wasn't about to hit the community again and ask them for more funds. Um, I also took to Facebook to get a, and got a, to get a general census on whether this event would be welcomed in our community again this year. While there was a pretty big outpouring of support and because I'm not one to give up easily, I continued to press on. I was able to work with the high school as well as the sheriff to develop a new plan. As of yesterday, GTHS has confirmed they will have their senior sunset dinner on the same night as the anticipated parade, parade. This schedule change has allowed us to revise the parade route. Instead of the original figure eight through the community, we have reduced it down to two point one miles, down to the two main roads. Whereas the drivers will go from De Berry to Mount Vernon to Main Street and end at the high school for their event. After speaking with Lieutenant Lane yesterday, we determined that this will not only reduce the number of traffic breaks, but it will reduce the sheriff time as well. While there will still be a large presence of officers, which is absolutely welcomed, it would reduce the cost to approximately three thousand seven hundred seventy-one. The parade will still be a fantastic celebration as this will allow us to move slower on those two main roads, roads. I feel this will also add to the excitement as the spectators will gather together along those two main roads as opposed to sporadically outside their homes in the neighborhoods. It will bring the community together outside and we can all celebrate the success of our twenty twenty-two graduating seniors. Lieutenant Lane and I also discussed the rules and guidelines that participants and spectators are expected to abide by. These rules will be given to each participant upon registration and again at check-in. Each participant will complete a waiver in addition to providing their license plate and driver's license number. Each car will also be numbered. With all this information on hand, I feel extremely comfortable that this event will be a safe, highly successful and something our future graduates and community can look forward to for years to come. This all being said, there is an expense to this event. While we have been able to reduce the share of costs significantly, this still leaves expenses to be covered. It is my sincere desire that the city offset the cost of the event, perhaps from the Community Benefit Fund or whatever the council feels is most appropriate. Our community can certainly benefit from more camaraderie and we can always use some extra Titan spirit. You have my utmost commitment to the success of this event and I am hoping to receive your commitment as well. The reason I stated it that way is because I know that the past two years, there was some what of a concern about the safety. We had some individuals that were hanging outside their car. That is absolutely unacceptable and, and won't be tolerated. And Lieutenant Lane and I discussed this last night and I just can't express to you enough the value that this would bring to our community. But also I can't express to you how committed I am to this, not only for our seniors, but, um, for everyone involved. And I wouldn't take that responsibility lightly. So, um, you have my commitment to make it a safe, um, event. I'm hoping that we can get this, um, not only for this year, but as an annual event.
I have a question for the city manager.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mrs. Bull before she sits down?
Who's your organization?
We are parents. I'm, thank you. We're just a bunch of parents.
I, I don't recall giving Community Benefit Fund money to anybody that wasn't part of a recognized organization. That's what I was going to ask the city manager. The city, the city manager's.
Say that again?
I'm asking the city manager a question.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Bull.
Yeah, I, I think you have to be part of a recognized organization to get the benefit funds. You don't just hand them out to individuals.
Yeah, because I, what I'm struggling with is I'm not concerned about the money, but I'm concerned about spending it and it being appropriate. We've never given money to anybody that's not part of a recognized organization. And we're trying to fill a void that isn't here this year. And we typically handle these things during our budget year when we're going to waive fees or, and those kinds of things. I'm a bit uncomfortable in this situation. That's my, my two cents.
Any further questions for staff before we get into deliberation? Mayor Pro Tem and then Councilmember Allen.
Question for Ms. Boyd.
Yes, sir.
So you stated that, you know, we had it for two years and that was due to COVID. Were the seniors expecting this and the parents expected this parade this year? Were they just assumed that, you know, we're going to have one? Or was this parade expected?
It was anticipated, yes.
Okay.
Expected? I don't know specifically.
It was anticipated. It was anticipated. All right. And then the parent that was in charge last year, what appropriate ways did they go about? Did the city spend any money on the parade last year to insurance or?
There was no money spent last year. That was Mary Beth Carrera. Um, she is hoping to be here this evening. Uh, she's coming from LA area. Um, Mr. Duffy was the city manager at that time and he was able to somehow cover the expenses. I don't know how that was, but we did not pay any expenses. The year before, it was put on strictly by the parents and, uh, we like to joke, we went rogue. I had nothing to do with it. But we just went rogue. We did not, the city was not involved. Last year, Mary Beth, um, got the city involved. Perhaps the city was not involved the prior year because everything was shut down, actually.
Okay, well, as the city manager, do you know how much the city spent last year of our funds?
Um, I, I don't know exactly, but I assume it'd be somewhere in the, in the same range. And actually considering the route, probably closer to about, um, well, our cost would have been the same, but the sheriff's department, they ate the overtime out of, out of their generosity and their piece would have been probably about sixty-six hundred dollars. So in total, somewhere about nine thousand dollars between the sheriff's department and the city. We, we ate those expenses and then we also spent about two thousand dollars on the insurance that the city paid for that policy.
So we have a pass where the city did pay for this and it wasn't recognized as a nonprofit, but we did it anyway. Right? So now we already set ourselves a precedence that we put the city, you know, hey, we did this before, why can't we do it again, kind of scenario?
The, the city paid for our portion. The sheriff's department donated their portion. This year, the sheriff's department is unable to donate that, so we would have to pay, write a check to the sheriff's department.
Okay, so the question for the city attorney, were we, are we within legal rights to pay for this if we did it last year?
Well, uh, two points on that. Number one, even though we did it last year, that does not set precedent. So I don't think we're, we're locked into a decision there. Secondly, the council would have to make a finding that the expenditure of public funds serves a public purpose. And so if the council finds that, you know, the parade will serve a benefit to the community, then the council could, that would not trigger a gift of public funds.
So we're in no legal binding or not out of legal binding if we did sponsor this? Or no?
Yes, so long as the council makes a finding that it's, it's, the expenditure serves a public purpose.
Okay. And the Community Benefit Fund, which is a different entity, that's just for nonprofits?
Yeah, that would be for a group or something. We probably wouldn't use Community Benefit Funds for this. We would just, the, the city would essentially write the checks.
Okay. I got one more question for Ms. Boyd. So if the council did vote for this and it went ahead, what steps would you take next year to prevent this from happening again, where the, the city has to pay for it? I mean, what protocol do you have in plan? Are you going to be the one in charge? Are you guys developing a, a group to work with our parking wrecks?
I would absolutely love to head that up again next year. Um, I have schools in the district for another four years. My intention, my hope would be anyways that this is something we can put on the annual calendar and it's something that we do as a community each year. However, if it's something that the, the city of Grand Terrace is willing to pay the expense for it this year and next year, I need to raise money for that. With notice of that now, then I can do my best to raise that money. Of course, I would, I would love to do as I did this year and instead raise money for children that did not have funds to go to prom and senior inspiration and grad night. And we were able to raise that money and send those kids to those events. I would like to put my effort into those things for raising money. But if, if it means that I need to forego those things and raise money for the parade, then I guess I would need to weigh those, the importance of those two things. My heart is for the children. No matter what, I'm going to raise money for those in need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a flashback. I thought we had a reg concert. I heard bass in my ear. They got it going on right now? You know, thank you, Ms. Boyd. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any further questions for staff on this item? Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. So my question would be, um, if this is an expenditure of public funds, is this parade, and this, I don't know, this might be for Ms., Ms. Boyd, uh, rather than the city manager. Is this just for the high school students? The Grand Terrace High School students?
From the city side, we haven't had any discussion about a restriction one way or another. To what it's, it has not been discussed on our side.
Thank you. There, um, my original intention was only for the city, um, for the school Grand Terrace High School. But on Facebook, I had two people reach out to me wondering if we would open this up to other seniors that live in Grand Terrace but go to another high school. My reaction to that is I would love to celebrate every senior. You know, point blank, my heart is for all the seniors. I would need to do, figure out some different logistics with that because now there is a senior event at the high school. I spoke with the high school. They don't find an issue with it. Those kids, um, let's say someone that is from, for example, a Redlands High School, but they live here in Grand Terrace. As they pull into the Grand Terrace High School, then those Grand Terrace kids would be dropped off, go to their dinner and the others would, you know, go home with their parents or whatever. I can figure that out and for sure, if you have a stipulation either for or against that, I will
Thank you.
Do what you need me to do.
Further questions?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not done yet, Mayor.
Well, I have a question about the public good. And so if, if we're giving money for public good and they are members of the community, where do we, where do we draw that line in, in it being okay? Mr. City Attorney.
That would be a policy decision by the council. I mean, essentially, it's a, it's a case by case scenario.
So if they live in town, but they go to school somewhere, that's not, that's not that big a deal, as far as you're concerned?
Well, again, if, if, if the council finds that the parade in, as, as a event.
Councilmember Wilson and then Mayor Pro Tem again.
Mayor, I haven't, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right. I just think Councilmember Wilson hadn't had any chance to ask a question, but no questions. All right, go ahead, Councilmember Allen.
Yeah, I'll finish with the questions I have and, and let you know. Thank you. This is a question for the applicant, not the city manager, Ms. Bull. Have the parade participants, you and, and your group that wants to, that is promoting this, have you reached out to any other organizations that typically do support these type of events? Like Lions or Rotary, Kiwanis, these sort of, uh, organizations? Have you reached out to them for any kind of, I hate, the reason I ask you this is because there's some apprehensions on like, um, like Councilmember Robles mentioned a minute ago, you know, with, um, us appropriate, or us giving money to, um, sanctioned organizations, I guess you could call them, or, you know, with these like registered organizations that do these sort of, uh, support for charity or community events, like the, the ones that I mentioned. So I was just wondering about the, reaching out to them and seeing how, if you've had any success with that.
I have not reached out to those other entities because my first direction was towards this, to the city, to see if we could get approval that way. I, though, however, serve on the Grand Terrace Foundation for Youth. So, um, I don't know if that's, you know, an option where if we use the Community Benefits Fund, could it be donated to the youth foundation? I don't know how all that specific, all that works.
Okay.
But I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to make this happen. So I'm just kind of following my chain of command with, you know, city manager, Lieutenant Lane.
Yeah, let me ask you this, uh, follow up to my last question then, not just with those type of organizations, but has, has there been any sort of fundraising other than you coming and asking us? Uh, any kind of fundraising efforts on the part of anybody to raise funds to support this event?
For this specific event, no, because, um, I had just done an outreach about two weeks prior to this and we were able to fund, uh, seventeen kids going to grad night, twenty-four going to prom, two couples going to senior inspiration. We have gift cards for their bus trip. I raised a lot of money that was specific for senior needs. I wish now in hindsight, had I, you know, earmarked some of that or enough, or if I would have said to the donors, this might go for the parade. But now in good conscience, I can't spend their money on a parade if it's, when I raised it for the intention of senior needs. Um, and we were able to meet those needs of the seniors.
Yeah, so, okay. Um, well, thank you for that. Do you plan any fundraising efforts? Have you, do you have any planned right now? Would you be able to tell me of any that you have planned right now for the, to support this event?
I would be more than willing to go to other community, other, um, businesses, but I just did an outreach from the community and I would not feel comfortable doing that because I just asked them for an extreme amount. because I just asked them for an extreme amount of money, unfortunately. But I mean, I will do whatever, if, if we turn around and say the city council is not going to fund this, then I will take whatever action I need to do that is within my means.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm finished.
All right.
Okay.
Any further questions? All right. Anybody wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
No.
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we'll bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
I, oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Allen?
Go ahead. You want to?
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead, so was I.
Okay. I'll throw mine out there. You might want to override it. I would make a motion that the, we support this event in this manner, that we match dollar-for-dollar any efforts, any fundraising that they do up to half the cost of the event. And that's my motion.
Half of what?
Thank you. Half of what they raise?
Half of what cost? Our cost, eighteen?
No, the motion is that we match dollar-for-dollar whatever they raise up to half the cost of the event we would cover.
The entire sixty-six hundred dollars?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The entire sixty-six hundred dollars?
That we would, up to fifty percent of that.
Uh huh.
Yeah, that we would match dollar-for-dollar up to fifty percent of that, of the overall cost of the event.
The reason I ask is the city part was eighteen hundred.
We could match dollar-for-dollar that sixty-six hundred up to half of the, of the.
So is that your, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Six hundred and sixty?
That we match dollar-for-dollar any effort that they put forward to raise money up to half the cost, fifty percent of the total cost of the event.
Six thousand six hundred dollars?
Yes, yes.
That's his motion. Is there a second?
Unless Mr. City Attorney would like to have, it should be worded some, is that worded pretty good, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
I would add one thing, though.
Okay.
I would ask that you also include direction to staff to bring back a resolution setting forth a public benefit findings to justify the expense.
Okay.
So we'll bring that and put it about on consent calendar at the future meeting.
Okay, I would add that to my motion that the city, that we add, give direction to staff that they come back with a resolution.
Setting forth the public benefit findings.
Setting forth the public benefit findings.
Okay.
I have an alternate motion there, so if you want to say.
All right. Mayor Protem?
My alternate motion is to cover the total costs of this event. Dollar-for-dollar on everything. It's, was brought to us last couple of years. Well, it wasn't brought to us last year, it was covered, so this is my reason for this. I think it's too late in their game to raise the money. I think this is a good public event, even though, you know, the city's like, you know, we're sponsoring, we're actually helping the seniors and their parents with this. But I think next year, you know, they go a different avenue, they try a different event, so different way to collect the money. But my motion is to pay a hundred percent of all proceeds, all costs to cover this parade and bring it back to staff for.
With the resolution.
With the resolution. I forgot the word. Also, I went blank.
No worries.
Yeah, with the resolution. So that's my motion.
I'd like to second Councilman Allen's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for the motion put forward by Councilmember Allen, which is to pay half of the cost towards the six thousand six hundred dollars matching the fundraising efforts of the parents. And with that second, we will vote on that motion.
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
No.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item number ten. Ordinance adjusting city council salary and formally establishing vehicle and technology allowances.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Is this the correct one? PDF, okay, that's fine. Okay, so this, I apologize, the, I'm not a PowerPoint expert and so there's a little delay on the text, but I'll speak slowly. So this item supports Council Goal Number Five, engaging the community by participation by allowing the city to ensure that the council salaries and allowances are competitive such that it will encourage more citizens to participate in local governance. So before you tonight is a proposed ordinance which accomplishes three things. The first is to codify an adjustment to the city council salary. Second, codify an adjustment to the city council vehicle allowance. And third, establish and codify a new technology allowance. So let's begin with the council salary. Government Code Section 36516A provides for increases in compensation, but the amount of the increase shall not exceed an amount equal to five percent for each calendar year from the operative date of the last adjustment of the salary. At the last, in March, we had this discussion and at that time it was understood that the council had initially had a salary of three hundred dollars since the city had incorporated. But since doing further due diligence and preparing the ordinance, we located an ordinance in 2010. And in that ordinance, it actually adjusted the salary from a hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars. And so a little bit of background on that, it appeared that in the 1990s, the council had adjusted the salary from one fifty to three hundred. But they did it via the budget process. They didn't actually formally adopt the ordinance at that point in time. But in 2010, it was recommended by staff at that point in time to codify it, which is consistent with state law. So that is what occurred in 2010. So proposing an adjustment going forward, we have to use 2010 versus 1978 as a starting point for the calculation. So under that calculation, you'll see there's a twelve-year period between the 2010 ordinance and now. Five percent times twelve years is sixty percent. Sixty percent of three hundred is a hundred and eighty dollars per council member. And the additional one eighty on top of the existing three hundred comes to four hundred and eighty dollars per month. And so that is what is proposed in the, in the ordinance. So that's part one. Part two is allowances. So under state law, city council members may be reimbursed for actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of official duties. Now, I will, I will acknowledge this out of the gate, that state law contemplates a reimbursement-based approach. Basically, council members submit their invoices, receipts, and, and they get reimbursed for those amounts. That, I will always say, is the safest and most consistent approach with the state law. However, in 2010, the California Attorney General was presented with the following question. May city council, may a city provide a vehicle allowance to its council members in lieu of reimbursing actual vehicle expenses after such expenses have been incurred? Basically, can we just grant an allowance instead of actually requiring receipts and things of that sort, documentation? And the AG concluded, a city may provide a vehicle allowance to its council members in lieu of reimbursing actual vehicle expenses after such expenses have been incurred. So some thoughts as to what the AG considered. The purpose of the allowance was provided was to realize administrative and other cost savings and efficiencies for the public. In other words, rather than requiring staff to go through and go through invoice and do line items, it was thought to be more efficient to just grant a flat amount. Second, the AG required that it must be authorized by statute, ordinance, or charter. So for that reason, I am recommending that we formally codify the travel allowance in our municipal code, which currently we do not. The third item is the amount of the allowance must be reasonably related to what is required for the performance of an officer's public duty. So there has to be some reasonable connection as to the amount they're given and the amount, and the performance of their duties. So with respect to the vehicle allowance, again, even though the state law talks about reimbursement-based method, based on the AG opinion, you know, it appears that the travel allowance is permitted subject to certain requirements. So what is proposed tonight is, in the ordinance, is that we'll allow a travel allowance which will serve as reimbursement for expenses such as gasoline, mileage, wear and tear, insurance and depreciation incurred by council members in the use of their personal automobiles in the course of official duties. Current amount is two hundred per month. In speaking with prior staff, we were not able to locate any documentation of where that was formally established and when. It was not entirely clear. But tonight, we are proposing four hundred and fifty dollars a month. And I will note that, I mean, the two hundred dollar amount has been around for years. I'm not entirely sure how long. But as the council and the public are aware, gas prices are skyrocketing. Costs of everything, services of repairs and products to use for the car are also increasing. And so that was a thought in increasing the amount from two hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars per month. And again, the ordinance will formally codify this allowance in the municipal code.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Any questions for staff?
A little more, a little more.
Go ahead. I just figured I'd take a pause and see if there was a question at this point.
Absolutely.
I see, I'm seeing, no. Continue, continue.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So the third item is a technology allowance. And this, I, is thinking outside the box and also recognizing what has occurred in the last few years with COVID. You know, now, before, you know, Zooming and reaching meetings via virtually was really not a norm. But today, it is a norm. You know, it is an option for the public to participate as also member, also an opportunity for council members to participate virtually, using their computers at home, using their mobile phones, doing meetings, ad hoc committee meetings, regional meetings. Things are being done by Zoom as a, as a norm now. And so one thought was to adopt a technology allowance. I will note that some cities, we did locate City of Alameda, City of Santee, that do have vehicle allowances. The one caveat is they are charter cities, so it's not entirely clear if they have, if they are doing it under the charter or just under general state law, but I did want to note that. Technology, this concept is an extension of the Attorney General opinion. Again, the Attorney General opinion only talks about travel allowance. But the concepts that we found in the AG opinion in terms of having it in the code, having the amount reasonably tied to the performance of the duties and also having some basis for the amount are used for this. You know, again, there is a risk question, and I do present it to the council, whether the council wants to do it as an allowance versus a reimbursement-based model. I put it out there for discussion later. The ordinance contemplates an allowance, which I'll get into next.
Thank you. Questions?
Really quick, before.
No questions.
Okay, I'll just finish really quick. So the proposed amount of the technology allowance is two hundred and five dollars. The amount will serve as reimbursement for technology-related expenses such as cell phone service, internet service, and other similar costs that council members may incur in use of their personal technology-related equipment in the course of their duties. This amount was not pulled out of the air. There was support for it. Staff did determine that the monthly internet service in Grand Terrace through Spectrum is a hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. And monthly cell phone service for Verizon was ninety and for AT&amp;T about one oh five. And so using these two dollar amounts, it was determined that the allowance would be two hundred and five dollars using the lower of the two cell phone costs. So that would be the two oh five, again, if the allowance, if that's the direction of the council. Again, if the council wanted to do it as a reimbursement, we would just modify the ordinance to basically make it a not-to-exceed amount. So with that, some last general comments. The salary adjustment that we discussed earlier would not take effect until a new council member is seated, so that would not take effect right away. Likely would be after the next election. With respect to the two allowances, they will begin on July first, commence, consistent with the new fiscal year. And the last thing, as directed by the council in March, was that the ordinance also provides that the city manager will place a discussion item on the city council agenda during the budget preparation cycle each year so the city council can, you know, have this discussion as a matter of course. And the council could make adjustments as necessary. So with that, that is the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Councilmember Robles?
Also, what, you know, being in government a long time, one of the things too is not doing a lot of paperwork is, otherwise you, you, we would have a fleet of cars usually, you know, and then you'd have to have council check out cars for longer meetings. So that's also part of that weighted cost in there.
That is correct. And actually, that's a point that the AG made in its opinion is that doing the allowance also, you know, that's where the efficiencies and the cost savings because rather than buying cars for each council member and monitoring that, it was just more efficient to just reimburse.
Yeah.
To an allowance.
As far as like the technology thing, you know, like I, I suffer, you know, from arthritis. Sometimes it's really profound impact on me, so I don't carry the one that the city issued. And the other problem is I'm on the computer all day long, so then it's like, if I'm on the city one, then I can only do city business on that one. Then I have to turn and go to my own computer and it's just nuts. When I first got in the council, the City of Coaten, we're on our academy training and they, city issued them a phone and they were real happy with both phones. And then after, by the end of the first day, you should have seen their faces, they were tired of trying to answer two phones. So there, there is a cost to, to us.
That's all you have? Okay. Any further questions? All right. Seeing none, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Bring it back to council for a consideration of a motion and further discussion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further discussion?
And Mayor, can we read the recommendation? Please?
Sure. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to read the recommendation?
Yes, I, was there a motion in a second?
Yeah, a motion in a second. So he just wants to be clear.
Right. All right. So then the title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adjusting the Monthly Salary of the City Council and Establishing Vehicle and Technology Allowances. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council?
Next on our agenda is Non-O owner-occupied rental inspection program progress presented by Leila Holtson, Senior Code Enforcement Officer.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have never used one of these before, so I'm going to work on that. Be patient with me. So the rental program is our non-owner-occupied rental property. What I'd like to discuss is our current program, our current challenges and the guidance that we're looking for from the city council regarding moving forward with this, this part of our. part of our program. So just, we all know there's an annual inspection fee, it varies per units. There is a reinspection fee if you fail the first inspection. Actually, if you fail the first inspection, you get a notice of violation, and then if it's fixed, you pass. If not, then there's the $47 reinspection fee. The Good Landlord Tenant Program was put in place, so basically if the first three years, if you pass on the first inspection, you receive a 50% annual fee reduction. And then if you pass on the fourth year as well, you will receive a 70% annual fee reduction. So it comes out to like $28, I think, and 50 cents a year if you are in the Good Lord, Good Landlord program. On the 11th year, the program, the home or the rental property will revert back to first year status, so then they go back to first to third year, you pass inspection. And these are all exterior inspections. We can't, we, we do interior inspections, but it requires tenant initiation. And so a part of our inspection, a lot of the times, we will make contact if we see the renter outside, ask them, you know, if there's anything inside that they would like addressed. For the most part, there, we have great rental owners, homeowners here. We don't have too big of a problem with single-family residences. We do have some challenges with apartments. So I know that we've had problems with parking, street parking, I know DeBerry and Nandina, different ones. There's an issue with overflow of parking. We looked into maybe the garages are not being used properly on the properties, maybe they're being used for storage instead of, instead of, for parking. However, I did go through the CUPs for, I believe, all of our apartment complexes, and I did do a parking lot count, where I actually went and counted parking spaces to make sure that they hadn't taken up parking spaces with unauthorized, let's, storage units or different things. And all of them were within their CUP guidelines, they all had the proper amount of garages and parking spaces. What we did, I did speak to a lot of the management, the managers at the apartments, and what I found was that to do a, an inspection of people's garages requires a volunteer, a tenant that's willing to let you go in, look, and it also, an owner can go in there, management can go in there if they give them the proper amount of time, and say, we need to go into your unit, we need to go and see that. We had them do that to a couple different units that had been complained on, and they were all cleared by the time the time came around and we looked into them. So there's no way for us to make sure 100% that all the garages are being used for their purpose, but we did do spot inspections. Same with the number of tenants. A lot of complaints we're having about parking have to do with a little possibly too many people in each unit. Again, the management company has to give them time, they have to say, okay, we'd like to come in and do an inspection, we need 72 hours or however many hours it is. And of course, there's the proper amount of people, when we get there, the proper amount of beds. So there's, there's not a lot of control that we can do there, but it seems like a lot of it is spilling into our city streets. And it is causing a problem, especially with trash in the street, because the street sweeper isn't able to get through different areas. And increased foot traffic. We've got a lot of, a lot of new neighbors, which is great, we love new neighbors, however, a lot of times, they have visitors, and the more people, the more chances there are for different activity that causes some challenges in the neighborhoods. Single-family homes, the challenges are slightly different. Inoperable vehicles seems to be a big one, seems to end up being a storage, the driveway seems to be, end up being a storage for, for, for vehicles that aren't working. Noise complaints, dogs, dogs are a big issue for single-family homes in the fact that we don't necessarily have the renter's information. So who do we go to for that dog that's running loose? Who do we, who do we talk to about a license if we can't get a hold of the renter? So we tend to lean on the homeowner to be the responsible party for the violations. And it works and it doesn't work at the same time. Inspection timing is something I also wanted to bring up, is right now, the current ordinance says that we need to do all of our inspections, which is approximately 380 inspections of different properties around the city. We have to do that, which is two, we have two code officers, we do that between the third and sixth month of each year. That's a lot of demand on, we get it done, but we would like to be able to stretch that out, give the homeowners a certain amount of time like we currently do, give, maybe make it from the third month to the 11th month, maybe make it from the second month to the 12th month, something to give us a little more time to also handle the other calls and complaints that are coming in, because we want to make sure we're spreading the workload evenly between all the citizens. Okay, so we're looking for some guidance on our crime-free multi-housing program that we've learned about. It's a great program, it's a voluntary program, we, that the renting apartments, the homeowners, they have to choose to want to be involved. And basically, it's a, it's a, I won't say contract, it's an agreement between them and the city that they're going to work to, work with us in the Sheriff's Department to keep crime down, to, if we have issues, to be proactive. That's just a general, there's a lot more to it that I'm not quite versed on, but we do have someone here to answer questions in case you'd like to. We can, I think it's a great tool, but we cannot force anyone to use the program. They have to want to use the program. And then we need clarity on what defines a rental. We need to expand our clarification as to how the city determines a property is a rental. Is it by different mailing address from the property address, homeowner's tax exemption filed with the assessor's office, or by a multiple listing service? If the property owners claim to be allowing a family member to live in the rental home without paying rent, does that, does the city still consider this a rental, or do we take them out of the rental program? And if you do want us to take them out, is there any evidence that you, I don't, we don't know how you would like us to handle that, because it's not owner occupied, but they are not receiving funds, they're not making any profit off of that. We, like I said, we want to make available to all owners of rental properties the opportunity to sign the crime-free lease addendum. It's voluntary, it would be enforced by the code and the Sheriff's Department. I'd like to know if you would like us to do business licenses required for people who own two or more single-family homes and any multifamily dwelling. This is something that Mr. Weiss and I used to discuss. I'm not sure, I know that it may be considered a business. I'm not sure how the council views that. That's something that Mr. Weiss and I really could never figure out which way we should go. And then we, I created a non-owner occupied rental information sheet last year because, again, I was having a problem with animals. We do handle animal complaints in code department, and I have a lot of unlicensed dogs. I have dogs biting people, I've got dogs running loose, and I don't have anyone to hold responsible. I can't get a hold of tenants, there's no verbiage in our, in our code that states the homeowner is responsible in the end. And I'm not sure how you would like us to handle that, because again, they're not here, and I'm not sure how you want, which direction you want us to go with that. And then, of course, the inspection timing change, I'd really like to be able to change that, give us a little more time to more evenly spread out the workload. Oh, and then we, I was asked to include, am I talking really fast? You're looking at me. Okay. Got it. Okay, so the late fee. They just want to know, should we be charging the homeowners a late fee when it comes to, if they're not paying their rental inspection program? We cannot charge them a late fee, we just have to wait for them to pay. And we're, just wanted to see if you wanted us to charge a late fee or leave that open.
Questions at this time?
Well, before we go any further, I do want to clarify, we're not coming to council looking for guidance on these answers. These are answers that staff will come back, we just wanted to make sure that you knew that these are the issues that we're contemplating and thinking about, and we will come back to you with the answers.
Okay.
On those guidances, these are operational questions that I think you guys don't need to be in those weeds, sorry, enforcement, in the weeds.
Okay. Questions? Mayor Protem.
Thank you for your report. I thought we were going to give all kinds of questions with those, answers with those questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
No, those are good questions, and it does bring up good points on that, you know, about, you know, is the apartments, you know, a business? Yeah, you know, business. But my question is, on the Good Landlord Program, because I'm thinking they're a business, that you have the rental for the good landlords, you know, the reduction of fees, do we deduct fees for our business license for our businesses here, if they're in business for many years?
No.
So you have big apartment complexes and considered business, why are we deducting fees when, you have to inspect each apartment, or you just do the whole block of them?
Well, the apartments actually do have business licenses. The multi, they do have, it's the smaller ones.
So do you inspect those apartments too? Are they part of the rental program?
By the municipal code, I need to give them a cer, I think it's two weeks' notice, and they, they pick 10 units, and then we make an appointment, they clear the units, tell the tenants, you know, that we're going to need that apartment, and then we do go meet with management, and we go through the 10 miscellaneous, I mean, just random apartments.
So the Highlands apartment, 200-plus units, they pay $36 per unit for their, or they just do a business license?
Both.
They pay for both. Okay. So when was this Good Landlord Program put in effect, and how many years has this been going? I mean, will this be something that maybe the council wants to take away from this because the landlords are making money, and you know, they should be doing it? Because, I mean, you caught my attention too, when there's not even a late fee, we can't charge them a late fee. What do we do? Do we do like the BRTAC and, you know, put a lien on their property? I mean, how do we do this?
That's a good question. I need to ask Shanita, because I know that that's something that she used to work with on. It may be a lien, because I don't, I have never opened up cases and gone after it in the code case for a non-payment. So I'm assuming, but I don't, I'm not 100% that it's probably.
It would be a lien on the property.
Yeah.
So if they're, if they fail, then we, just like the citation, if they don't pay their citation, you basically put a tax lien on the property.
But it was brought up that you, how do you go after late fees if they're not even paying that? I mean.
The late fees as far as the re-inspect fees, or they're just?
If they're not paying their late fees, they're not paying for anything, and then we know they're renting, so we lean on that because they're having a?
We do have the ability to do that, and that's part of the challenge with the program, is the first answer we get is, is, well, I'm renting to my, my cousin's living there for free, I'm not renting. And then, then we start going down that rabbit hole, and it ends up being a, a challenge for us, because now we have to prove that that's not their cousin that's renting it. And then we also have fairly stringent limitations on our right to access the building of the property, because it still is a private residence, and we have to treat it, we don't, we can't do searches, we can't do those type of things that would be invasive in your house as well. So there, those are some of the hurdles and challenges, as Leila brought up, that being able to do these inspections and being able to see inside the units is challenging as well.
Well, on the rental program, if they're renting a house, and you're saying, you know, you're having issues, do, how many families are allowed in a single-family home? Or we have a, can we do anything legally for that? Or, you know, I know the state changed all these laws, I mean, if that's part of inspection, you see like three or four families living in one house, I mean?
There's, there's no, there's no definition on density, density of occupancy on a house. How many, how many people can live in a house is not defined anywhere.
Okay. And then what did you say about the animal control? What, is it just with the landlords or the renters, or we having issues throughout?
We're having issues throughout, through apartments as well as single-family homes and duplexes, because obviously landlords don't want to give out their renter's information because they want to keep their renters, and renters don't want to answer the door because they don't want to talk to me. And so we, I, it's a public safety issue. How do I deal with these dogs that are constantly out and/or bite people, then they disappear, then they come back? It's a problem. I just need to, somebody, how do we, how does, how does the council want us to go about holding someone responsible, whether it's the homeowner or the renter? Where does the buck stop?
So what we, what we typically do with the, with the animal is the property owner gets cited, even if you have, even if it's a tenant, because we can't cite the tenant, I can't find them, and I can't lien them, I can't do anything to them to get that. So then the property owner ends up getting these citations for, you know, multiple animals on multiple apartments, and keeping that clear, you know, clear is one of the challenges that we face as well. So when you come, when you come to us and say, this, this is an issue, we're aware that this is an issue, and we're working on, you know, resolving those, those issues as part of the program.
Our last question, so if the resident rental and non-rental, if they do have multiple citations and they don't pay for or take care of the issues, what's the recourse on that?
Then we can lien the property.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Just some observations, some, two or three on, based on some of the information you've given us. Now, I know there's a real parking issue along DeBerry across, you know, and, and the other complexes too, but one of the things I also know about those places is there's only one way in and one way out, and when everybody's trying to leave at 7:30 in the morning, I could see why somebody would be tempted to park outside and just walk to their car. And I've asked in the past, these, all of these facilities have back entrances and exits, but they're not utilized, you know, and that could alleviate some of that, and some of, some of the people then might be more willing to utilize, drive in at night when they come home from work and have, they know that they can get out without having to wait in line. That's just, and I, something I was thinking about, about that issue you have with this rental program, and then you have the folks who say, oh, no, it's my family's home and I'm just living in it for free, you know? Well, maybe we should, could we rename this program and take out the word rental so that it can encompass all homes that are not lived in by the owner? You know? And then they can't say, oh, I don't pay rent. Well, that's not the point, you're not the owner. You know? And just by removing that word so that it's not so exclusive, I mean, so inclusive, and you know, we can include, you know, everything else that's needed. And, and I sometime, I really struggle though with holding it, like an out-of-town or out-of-state property owner responsible for the, for a pet of their tenants. Now, I know you, I know we need to have somebody, like you said, you said yourself, somebody needs to be held accountable, there has to be someone at the end of the day that's responsible. And so, and I, and I get that, but I, I mean, I really, I'm trying to think. But I, I mean, I really, I'm trying to think, if I was a, a property owner, a landlord, and I was doing all the right things, you know, and I had a tenant, you know, that, and I was out of town, you know, and I don't have control, they bring a dog home, and that dog gets out, you know? I, I struggled to hold that land, that property owner responsible for that, but yet, you know, I'm open to hearing your, your position on that too. That's all, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. On the subject of the dogs and the property owners, who is responsible for the dog license?
The owner of the dog is responsible for the dog license.
And we have their address on file and their contact information?
If they've licensed their dog.
Okay. So you're saying you're finding that some haven't been licensed?
Yes.
Okay. Because it seems to me that, that the owner should be responsible for their own dog.
Right.
But I also know that property owners have a little bit more influence over their tenants, and I believe that they, they should exercise that influence because they need to make sure that their renters are being good neighbors. And other cities do it. It's, it's not unheard of, things that have a person that has a rent, a single-family residence and have to have a business license. And other cities have actually put the trash and sewer on property tax because they were tired of not being paid for it. And so they just shifted it to the property tax, and the business, or the, the property owner can pass that cost along, but at least they get their solid waste and sewer paid for. So, I mean, there, there are certain other ways to look at it, and, and it sounds like you've spent time looking at both sides.
Hi, I have a question for you. You know.
Councilmember Allen?
Do we hold, like, if we had an, would we hold an out-of-state or an out-of-town property owner responsible for the actions of the children of their tenants? If they had like kids who were disruptive in the city somehow, would we cite the property owner and say, hey, property owner that lives in the state of Wisconsin and has a rental property here, your tenants' children are being bad, so take care of it? Do we do that? I don't know. Just a question.
I don't think we do that. Further questions? Councilmember Robles?
I'm wondering what the problem is, because if nobody wants to claim a dog, then it's a stray. And so then the strays, don't they go to the pound?
Yes, if you can catch them. If they don't have, call a neighbor and have the neighbor run out, grab them, go inside and not open the door.
Sheesh.
Um, there's a lot of different ways this can go.
And, and I had the situation, like renters, there, there is some laws, because I just looked at them. Like, for example, I have a manufactured home, so it's two-bedroom, one bath, so that means that four people can live there. And a tenant, stuff, other situations, it's, you know, there's two people per bedroom in a house that can, can be there. So I'm not sure where we're saying that we don't have density or over, over occupancy limits.
The lease can define that. So you as a landlord can define in your lease that says, even named people, Fred, Joe, and Becky can live there, and when Sue shows up, she doesn't get to live there. But there's nothing in state law that says you can't have, you can only have so many people there. So it's up to the landlord to define that in his lease with his tenants.
Correct. And the only thing that's out there would be like a health safety issue. By having so many people in the unit, there's a health safety issue, then in that case, you know, we could step in.
Yeah, if you have like 25 people living in a two-bedroom.
Yeah, that's, that could be a health and safety.
I mean, I just red, we're.
Councilmember Wilson?
I think we're at the crux of the particular problem in relation to parking. We're saying that there's, you can have an overdensification in apartment units, for example. So let's say, let's use, let's pick a number, 25 people in a two-bedroom apartment. You have to get to somebody's checkbook. It's the only way you actually can get any kind of adherence. It would seem to me that if it's a contract issue, which we think we properly identified, then how do we, how do we enforce the contract issue through the renting agency or the owner or whatever the situation is? In most cases, owners are not going to be willing to throw 25 people in a, into a unit and allow them to get away with basically what we would constitute with 21 people not paying rent. So it would, it would seem to me that if we work with the, the people that are quote-unquote managers, not just some, you know, bum sitting around watching TV, that if it's a real business, which is what these people really are in, they're in business. It's a, it's kind of a funny gray business, but technically, when you manage somebody else's property, you're conducting business within the city of Grand Terrace. Why wouldn't it be possible for us to get a little bit better information and a little bit of, you know, set aside some money in the budget to be able to sit down with the managers on a regular basis, make sure they understand that they're losing revenue? And that if we can get a fairly good handle on what the real density is on these deals, and I'm going to think that if this is going to be in the lower scale, not the upper scale, because the upper scale, the managers are going to be grinding like crazy, want that extra money. But in the lower-scale situations, we can pin down the density on these things. It'll also make sure that the garage isn't used by, you know, 40 individuals when there's only one space. I mean, when we're talking, we're not, we're not always talking children here. More people are now living in, you know, you can talk about as much as three generations living in a, a rental, whether you define it as a house, or as an apartment, or a lease, or whatever, doesn't matter. But it would seem to me that the only person you're going to be able to get a hold of to really knuckle down the cost of losing money is by sitting down with the, the, the manager and determining as best we can what it is. And if we make an independent inspection and find that that is not the case, and we can make our inspections whenever we want to because we've got the power of the manager with a key. And most management agencies have, you know, the right to be able to inspect at will. And we find that they are, you know, the only reason why they're getting us involved is because they can't, you know, other than using a shotgun, shotgun behind somebody, they don't have any other way of enforcing. But we can determine on a pretty regular basis that we could write a letter realistically to the ultimate owner of this deal and find out that they're, you know, they got 25 people in a, in a two-bedroom deal. I'm sure they'd have the incentive to start changing their occupants, occupancy habits, and that would then change our parking situation at the same time. And, and hopefully we would, it's not going to happen overnight. If it did, then all jurisdictions, it wouldn't have a problem to it. But I think we might even find a little bit of information from other jurisdictions where they have a high occupancy rental rate. Where, or, you know, like somebody like Lewis, for example, who owns a lot of their properties and then rents the things back to, through a rental agent. There's a lot of information available there, and somehow somebody's making somebody pay. So just making a suggestion, if, if we could do that.
This goes back to one of the, the issues that Leila, or thoughts that she brought up earlier, is we do all of our inspections in a very compressed timeframe. So to get in, to get to, and the landlords, I'm with you, for the most part, reputable landlords are willing to work with us. They, they don't want the wear and tear on their, on their property that you get from having 25 people living in that. And, and you're right, they do want the rent, but we need to work with them on that. And one of the concepts was to spread out that inspection period so there's a constant rolling throughout the year. It'd be the same thing as if Lieutenant Lane said, you know, 3 o'clock on Tuesdays, I'm going to have my traffic officer sit at the, you know, stoplight and write tickets, but the rest of the time, don't worry about it. And this, this thing gives us a chance to follow up on those things throughout the year and kind of have a rolling process and, and approach it that way.
Well, and, and do you agree with me that, that the owners would like to hear the words, "You can make more money"?
Well, I don't disagree at all.
Yeah.
But it's, it's one of those ways that we can work with the property owners rather than trying to, in this real compressed time.
Understood.
You know, force, force them, is, is give them some time too, to work and correct their issues internally.
And you're responsible for the, the compressed time and the scheduling, so I can't even speak to that. I mean, that's something you guys will have to work out on what is reasonable. But I think probably owners, once they start to see the writing on the wall, and they're starting to get more rental on their property, you know what that means. They can turn around and re, re-loan the thing because they're getting more revenue. They can prove they've got more revenue. And the next thing you know, you know, they've got a loan, a new loan on something, and it's putting cash in their pocket.
So, and I agree. So the, the ultimate purpose was is to make you aware that we do have, we, we are working on the, the home inspection. We've got some challenges. There's issues that we're addressing in this process. But as, as we're recreating this and working forward, we're, we're going to see some, some changes in how we redefine and from the rolling period, which may even require change in ordinance, to some of the way that we handle some of these dog issues and, and renting to cousins and those, that we really are looking at, and that you're not, I know there's frustration at times from the council, why aren't you doing anything to make you aware that we are and that we're, you know, we're running into these hurdles, and we're jumping over them as, as we hit them.
And believe me, we greatly appreciate, at least from my standpoint, I greatly appreciate your efforts. No win situations, there's no doubt. Whether it's an animal or otherwise, which, by the way, I have my coyote still. But I understand. I mean, you guys are really, you're really putting it out there to be able to cope with circumstances that are really, they're civil situations, and they're contract situations, and it's a prickly pear. But thank you. Anything you do.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All right, I'll open it up for public comment at this time. Anyone wish to speak? Bobby Forbes?
Thank you. So I remember when the rental program began, and Tom Swab and Steve Berry, I believe, were the initiators of this program. I was very much for it. I still believe in it. I don't think there should be any discounts. It is making too much of a problem for the staff. They have enough things to do. It's not enough of a savings. They incorporate these fees into their rents. Rents are outrageous now, and so they are getting more people coming in. But also, I'll rent someone a couple of house with one child, maybe one dog. It's in the lease agreement. I put in there that within 30 days, they have to show me their dog license. But if they get the dog and I don't know they've got it, I can't enforce that, but I always check after, you know, within that 30-day period to make sure their dogs are licensed. But reducing it two years, four years, whatever it is, going back in 11 years, that's ridiculous in my opinion. And I just don't know how and why you should have to try and do that. It's not very much money. $10 a month or something like that. It's, it's ridiculous that the staff would have to chase us and do computer generations, and they can't hardly keep up with the dog licensing in the community or getting the business licenses paid. How, how can they do this too? This just makes more work for the city staff. So that's my one beef. The other is that the owners should be notified, I think, when there's something with their tenant. We can't keep track of their kids. I, that's true. But if they're not supposed to have pets, a lot of times in the lease agreements, it says no pets, not a bird, not a fish, nothing in the house. Otherwise, or they might say one or two, or designate whatever the city ordinance is. That's what my lease agreements say, is city ordinance applies. So they have to know what that is. But they have enough things to do. I think we're the only city that has code enforcement seven days a week. That's crazy. And I believe that it should be, if you have one house that's non-owner occupied and someone else is living in it, no matter who it is, they should have a business license and they should be part of this program. And it should just be really clean and simple, in my opinion. You know, I remember when Philip Hannah, who some of you may remember, he was this quirky old guy in Grand Terrace, he had 11 houses that I had sold him in Grand Terrace. And Barry and him went around all the time because he would sometimes live in them when they were empty, so he didn't want to pay the fee. But for the most part, they were owner, they were rentals. They were not owner occupied. He needed to pay the fee. And it became a circus trying to chase him down to get this done. But I think you should have one flat fee every year and leave it at that and not create more work for the staff. They have enough things to do and enough, not enough people to do it. Thank you.
Any other requests to speak during this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Are you looking for just direction, or do you want us, do we need to give a vote to come back with?
No, information.
Mr. City Attorney?
Information only.
We need a vote on direction?
Uh, no, I don't think there's any.
All right. So do you have enough information at this point?
We got it. We want, part of it was to inform you.
All right. Yes.
And hear back from you on what we're informing you.
You've heard, you've heard the conversation, you've heard the questions, and, and you have your ideas about what you think will work, so it would be nice to have it come back and, and show us what you, what you've ultimately decided you want to recommend.
But we will do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item number 12. Landscape recognition program. Mr. Conrad Bolowich, City Manager.
All right. The flip side of code enforcement, the, the good stuff. So this is a council-requested item for the ability to recognize superior landscape and people that really take good care of their property. So right now, the code requires that properties are landscaped. It does not define how much or what that landscaping is. So theoretically, you could put a little shoebox-sized piece of grass on the, on the front yard, call it landscaped, and be done. And it also allows for a, a big discretion on what, what it looks like and what is, what, what, what is appropriate for landscaping. So what we want to do is, is finding a way to reward somebody. Come up with, we have a program, or we're developing a program that allows self-nomination. So if I think I have a beautiful yard, I can raise my hand. Nomination by your neighbors, or since code enforcement is out there looking at yards every day, the code enforcement can make that nomination as well. We're looking at doing this once a year, but rotating it because some yards tend to bloom in the spring and others in the fall, so that we can recognize both sides of that. And then as part of that, any, the nominees, just so we don't shoot ourselves in the foot, we'll need to make sure that they, they paid all their business licenses and we don't have any open code enforcement cases on them as we reward them. So the criteria is just kind of very simple, general appearance, any unique things, use of native plants, color, any kind of special gardens, rain garden. Actually, there's a couple of really nice houses that have their vegetable garden in the front yard. It's done very tastefully. How they're doing with water conservation, and then the way you use, you know, hardscape and plants together so that we can recognize something that somebody really uses some effort, some creativity to create a beautiful space in the city and make the city look better. For the selection process, the applicants go before the planning commission. Typically, those are done as kind of a round robin selection process where the planning commission can then forward up to 10 candidates to the council. The council can select one, all 10, whatever the, that they feel is appropriate. There may be some that come forward, and the council feels that, you know, these, these don't really work. And this is a concept now. If the council would like each council member to pick one, we want to have three, that's, it's fairly malleable on what, what we're looking at on that. And then some type of a small reward, essentially just a $100 gift certificate at one of the local nurseries, and a yard sign that's something that signifies that they are a recognized yard of, of Grand Terrace so that they can show off to their neighbors and have a little bit of additional pride in, in what they do. So we are looking that, looking for direction to implement this program and get it up and running for the fall selection this year. Any questions?
Councilmember Wilson?
We've had that, had a program similar to this funded a couple of years ago before the COVID. That's the way it's going to be, right? PC or something versus, you know, after the COVID, AC? Anyway. Anyway, and Councilman Jeff was real good at wanting that circumstance to be installed. And we had it in our regular nomenclature. And it worked well. We might want to look back at, staff might want to look back and see how it worked. I thought it worked pretty well. Of course, there's the antithesis. And that is all the junk that we have out there. Now fortunately, we don't have that much junk. Say, we've got a lot of pride in our neighborhoods. But we do have some really nasty stuff out there, and they're usually equated to rentals or something like it, although not always, according to the real estate genius up there. So, you know, in the long run, we're trying to, trying to instill some pride, and I think it's great. And we've done it in the past. And so, I think your ideas about a $100 gift card and so on, that's a good incentive. We just want to check what was there before. What I'd like to know is, is how do we get any kind of cooperation with the people that don't feel the same way we do?
Well, this, this is a carrot for the, you know, the ones that want to. The ones that don't, we have the stick. That's code enforcement citation, violation citation. Ultimately, as we discussed earlier, leaning the property for those citations. If it's really trash and becomes a public nuisance, there's the ability for us to abate it. I've gone through that nightmare once in my life and don't want to do it again. But there is that, there is that as the end, end result. So this is, this is the carrot side of the equation, not the stick side of the equation.
Okay. So I, I think what you brought up is good. That's my opinion. And I'll leave it to the rest of the, rest of my fellow council people.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Allen, and then Mayor Protem.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the mayor or the city manager and the staff. You know, I know this was my agenda item request some time back, and I want to thank you for bringing it forward. I really like the way that you've put this together. I like the concept and the idea, and I'm, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Well, now that we're getting a bigger car lot, so I guess I go for a drive around and look at the yards. Yeah, I like the idea of the gift card because my wife, she has me remodeling the bathroom. I ended up remodeling the backyard, so I did the dog's bathroom. So, you know, sod and everything's expensive. It's crazy out there. I like the idea, the only thing like, Mr. Councilmember Wilson, you know, because when we had a lady that got recognized, she acted like she didn't want to get recognized that day. Like it was an inconvenience for her. I think we had, Councilmember Allen had to go drag her in here. I had no idea. But she did not want to be recognized. She's like, oh, no, we do.
She was walking out the door as we were saying things.
Yeah. So I was just, you know, we had to make sure they want to come. And then it winds up, they don't want to come because they're shy, you know? We just say their name and their address or, you know, that's what we got to look at. Because some people are embarrassed, you know? They just want to do their yard and be left alone. So, you know, they don't want any recognition.
But then we won't force them. We won't have Lieutenant Lane drag them in for their award.
Yes, we won't have to send a sheriff in for it to go get them.
We can skip that.
They'll knock and kick the door down and go get them.
And is there some penalty if they won't put the sign in their lawn?
This, this is purely voluntary. We won't force them to have the sign in and then cite them if they don't have the sign.
It's not a yard sale sign, is it?
Something similar, something that, a little nicer, better quality than the yard sale sign.
Yeah, I was pleased when Allen brought this forth because I'm kind of a stickler for nice yards. And I'm seeing a lot of, and I think he made a comment too. And Doug Wilson at one point, I mean, people aren't watering their yards. And if they're not watering their yards, they need to decide what kind of yard they're going to have. Because you can do some, some things in lieu of grass. But I would like if this is something we could work with the kids and the schools and our local community paper, you know, to have keep Grand Terrace Beautiful kind of campaign going. Where there's kind of a peer pressure that's positive. As you said, it's more, it's easier to try to do it with a positive wave than a big stick at first. But, you know, some of the things I'm seeing is that people have work trash, you know, parked in their driveways in their truck. And, you know, it's just not a good aesthetic. And it's just, and a lot of lawns just are not being kept up.
But this will give the neighbors something to aim for to match.
Mm-hmm. Keep up the Joneses.
We got, hold on.
As Doug brought up, we used to have this program back in the day when we had the Chamber of Commerce newspaper or newsletter, and it was quarterly, I believe. And I don't think once a year is enough to make anybody pay attention. If someone doesn't want to be acknowledged or have it brought up here on Facebook page, the city's Facebook page or any of that kind of stuff, that's their business. Certainly, we can understand that privacy. But I don't think once a year is enough. Pride of ownership, pride of homeownership, I think, is what it was called back in the day. And it's a nice thing to make people, to acknowledge people, whether it be privately or publicly. It makes them feel good for what they've done. And we have some really beautiful properties in Grand Terrace now, especially with the change of the water and the switch over from all green grass to other things. And I have a concern with some of the plants that people are using, such as the fire stick. It's poisonous to people and to animals. There's a location at Oriole and Franklin that has a slope, and I think the city maintains it. It used to be covered with fire stick, and that has changed. I just noticed recently that that's all gone. But a lot of people walk their animals. And so, I don't know if that's private property or city property. That's why I brought it up. But I think this is a nice thing. It makes people feel good to be acknowledged, you know? And this would be great. And however you get to that point, obviously, it's going to bring more work to the staff. But at least it's a bonus to the community that people go, wow, they're acknowledging us. I think it's a, it's a good thing to bring back. I just think it should be more often than once a year. Thank you.
I'd rather not do it quarterly, but by annual would hit a fall and spring time.
You were making the comment about different times of year for the different types of yards and how they bloom also.
That was, that was the purpose for a spring and fall. And doing it, doing it, and Bobby's correct. I mean, there's just a strain of resources. And, you know, planning commission time, council time, and staff time to weed through these. But doing it twice a year so that there's a spring recognition and a fall recognition. Wintertime's dormant and summertime, it's brown. So, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson. Actually, we're still in the middle of public comment, though. Can I see if there's anybody else that wants to speak during this time, and then I'll bring it back and you can have your say.
I don't know if I understand that, but okay.
Are there any more requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their, their further conversation and deliberation and motion. So, Councilmember Wilson.
Whatever she said. I, I think, you know, one, one more step on top of that. We could probably work with Riverside Highland Water District and see how they're, are one of our number ones servicers. And perhaps there could be an incentive situation worked out. Because I know over in the desert, where they have like a four-to-one overdraft, where, in other words, rain doesn't take care of the amount of water they need to make all those golf courses look nice for all those people that retired way too early. I'm thinking that maybe Riverside Highland Water could give us, give them some kind of a break on their four-tier water charge or something. When they do things to their front yard or their backyard that, you know, changes the amount of water. I mean, it's nice for it to look pretty, but it's also really important to us, all of us, to think that somebody's saving. And there's nothing as demonstrated as well. If you, you know, look on somebody's yard and one day it's all grass and the next time it's like gravel. And even though we might consider it kind of ugly in the desert, they probably think it's really neat. And, you know, or Arizona or one of those areas. And from our, you know, down the line, all our children will probably think it's real neat too because we'll have, you know, more water. So I'm wondering if that's a, if we could, would it be important for us to make two designations? One for pretty, in other words, aesthetic, and the other one for water-saving?
Actually, that is one of the criterias, the water conservation techniques. So we certainly don't want to, although it may be beautiful, a tropical jungle may not be the right. But somebody that's able to get a lush feel with the right plants and the right. So we would take all of those pieces into consideration. And certainly, the plan was to work with Riverside Highland, at least to make sure that we're recognizing and forwarding their conservation expectations.
My understanding is the city has something that's called like a drought-tolerant wa, um, plant list.
We do.
And it could probably be combined with anything the water district also has. But in the overall, I also remember about 10 years ago, when all of this stuff started to take to grips, the state, I believe it was the state of California, worked with the water, the various water districts and came up with some incentive cash-wise so that they could, the water districts could justify hiring personnel that could put in place school situations and just regular homeowner situations that could educate everybody on these things. I have a feeling that money probably went in somebody's pocket, but I don't know that it ever went, came out in a cooperative program. So I wonder if a cooperative program would be possible.
Our, our goal is to work with Riverside Highland on this. We're not, I mean, these guys are the water guys, and this, one of the largest uses of water in any residential situation is landscaping. So we would, we would work with them on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further deliberation? How about a motion?
I move the item.
I'll second whatever the motion is. I think it says that we just give them guidance, right? The recommendation.
Direction to implement.
So you'll be coming back to us with this?
No, the direction to implement. I'll, I'll report back on what we're implementing. But it'll pretty much look like this.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magnovo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so from landscaping, we move on to funding.
Now we're, now we're under the good stuff. So, this is the
So this is the American Rescue Plan funding.
American Rescue Plan funding. And more of an explanation on what I see those funds should be and then certainly asking for input and direction as far as what, what you should be, what you're looking for as well. So, the, we all heard about the American Rescue Plan coming in last year. California, every city got some chunk of the money. Grand Terrace will get about $3 million. It'll become, actually, in two tranches. We already have the first one. And sometime in mid-July or so, we'll, we'll receive the second one. We have not expended any of those funds yet. So, basically, we can, the funds are designed to be offset revenue losses to COVID. There's a long, complicated formula that really hurts to work out. But there is an exemption that for cities that get less than $10 million, they do not have to go through this formula. We can just apply this and, and under the assumption that those are lost revenues. So, we will run that avenue. And then, the lost revenues will go to general fund, as far as ARP is concerned, to pay for law enforcement activities. It's one big clean payment that we can do. And then, the funds that are not going to law enforcement in the general fund, then we can apply to other activities. So just so we understand the accounting, the steps that we're going through to, to get there. With that, here's the laundry list of stuff that we would, we would like to look at. And the concept in putting this together is, this is one-time money. We don't want to do things that are multi-year cost items. It's, it, things, just like if you, whatever, get a bonus on your paycheck, you don't go up your, your car payment. You fix one thing in your house or you do something that you need to do as with one-time money. So we're treating one-time money as one-time expense. We do need some records management software to complete some of the, the software portions here in the city. There's, there's a great deal that's still on paper. And that's going to be about $32,000 for that cost to complete that. Believe it or not, we own a well at Grand Terrace High School. It's right there. See if I got the button here. It's right there. There's Veterans Freedom Park. At the end of the cul-de-sac, there's the basketball courts. That little spot there is Grand Terrace property. When the high school was put in place, that piece was carved out. There's an abandoned well site. County Environmental Health has very nicely asked us to not just cap it but plug it because there's multiple layers of aquifer so that basically the whole shaft has to be filled with concrete and the well stuff, the equipment has to be lifted out. And it is a hazard both for, you know, we don't want kids falling in the well, but also to cross-contaminate different layers of the aquifer. And we want to avoid that and not be the cause of that. And that's, there's a cost of about $50,000 to that. We want to look at tree planting through the city. There's, we talked about it a couple of times in the workshop, that there are sections of the tree, city where street trees have been planted. Landscaping areas along the street have kind of been allowed to deteriorate. And tree canopy and that landscaping adds value to the, to the properties around that. It also is green, manages greenhouse gas and cooling. The same, with that, for about $50,000, we have, and driving around, have an atrocious problem with our street signs. And there's, there's a couple of examples. They're faded. Emergency crews cannot see it. My first couple of weeks in the city, somebody would say, go to this street, and I couldn't find it because I couldn't read the signs. So, to replace those street signs is, is about $150,000. And between the two of them, the other one I'd like to do is at that, the wedge there at Palm and Barton, where we have the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. I would like to plant a real, living tree. Our Christmas, our Christmas tree is at end of life. They last five, seven years. I think this one's about 10 years old. A replacement is about $20,000. So, I'd rather, I'd rather spend the money once and plant a tree and
I'm looking at Councilmember Wilson because every year he tells me our tree's not tall enough.
So, in
And if it was a living tree, it would continue to grow.
A living tree at some point will be tall enough. But, and I've seen this done at other places. The first couple of years, the tree is okay. And by the time they're 10 or 12 years old, it really is a substantial tree and a beautiful centerpiece for that. So I'd like to roll that into this piece. We have our public works trucks, which are essentially getting to end of life. The last new truck we bought was a surplus truck from Loma Linda that they were selling as junk. So, we, we need to replace that, that fleet. We need a new roof on City Hall. The city, it was roofed when the building was built and has not been repaired since. That actually is the ceiling in front of the conference room upstairs. And there's those kind of marks in the library and all over the place. Just, it's, it's end of life. And, you know, it's over 40 years old and it's, it's time to be replaced. Now, now to the rest of the infrastructure stuff. Sidewalks and handicap ramps. We have identified several areas with trip hazards. Sidewalks lifted, broken sidewalks. lifted, broken sidewalks, um, handicap ramps that are not in compliance as far as the slope and the, the accessibility that we need to, we need to repair, for about $250,000. And then, um, the lion's share, and the two-thirds of the funds, I'd like to expend on paving streets. And when we, we looked at legislative priorities, I think it was my, my first month here, the, the answer from the dais on, on everything was streets, streets, flood control, and some more streets. And, um, what, what the idea is, is with the, the other priorities, anything that we can bring in under on the other priorities, will go to streets. Um, the, the, this, and, and we'll be bringing forward the CIP program as part of the, the budget process, but our, our major arterial, it's the place that everybody drives on, needs to be in a, in a sustainable condition to, um, not just provide decent streets, but to attract good quality residents, businesses, and, and keep the city flowing the, the way it should. So that is the, uh, recommendation on these. With that, um, I'm, I'm open to hear your input, left, right, or sideways, on this. And, um, with these recommendations, each project, as it comes forward, will come forward as a separate project and with its own appropriation. This really is direction, so that we don't go down the line and come forward with a contract to repair sidewalks, and you come back and say, "I, I don't want sidewalks repaired," or, or something along those lines. These, these are broad, broad brush recommendations. And, um, with that, I am open to questions.
Councilmember Robles?
I like everything, um, including the tree planting. We had a contract for the Barton Road, um, that beautification or specific about, and we're discussing trees. I don't know what happens to these consultants. They come and then we never see them again, and then they show up. But my point is, are we going to be, um, looking at that plan and trying to implement some of our tree planting and using their guidelines?
There is a Barton Road beautification plan that was done, I think, two or three years ago, and, yeah, nobody's, nobody ever funded it, nobody ever filled it out or did anything with it. And that would be a basis to start from, um, you know, to, to get something along Barton that looks nice. And it, it has potential, with a little bit of effort, I think it'll be a beautiful street.
Well, because, um, what I wonder, because the last time we saw these, these folks, they were asking us what kind of trees we wanted, and they were going to come back. They've never come back. So if there was a completed plan, we've never, I've never seen the completed plan.
There is, there is one somewhere. I, I saw pieces of it. We do have recommended, um, trees and, uh, tree planting, so whatever we plant will be appropriate for the space as far as roots and non-invasiveness and, and that they do maintain their canopy and not get too big for the, the spot that we're going to put them.
Okay, because we had a discussion about, I wanted palm trees, and then other folks wanted shade trees, so then we thought we would see something come back that was a combination of palm trees and shade trees.
Shady palm trees. Shady palm trees.
I, I do not want palm trees, and I hate to, hate to argue with you.
Wait a minute, who's this, who's on the city council?
I'm, I'm, I'm giving you my recommendation. Um, palm, palm trees, while they are beautiful and really are a, a mainstay of Southern California, they become a maintenance issue, and they drop the palm fronds. We had a huge drop last weekend.
Yeah.
Um, that actually closed two lanes of traffic and took us a couple hours to clean up. So, and, and there's a liability, liability issue if we don't keep them.
Right, I don't know where the fronds come from, but one year I had to let the city manager know, because it just, we had a big win. But no, what I'm not, I'm just advocating, um, one section where maybe it would be considered the town square, where we take up the, uh, uh, when we were doing this, I was showing the community of Verado in Arizona, or now, like, I live part-time in, in Dana Point, and they have their, uh, palm trees, and they're quite, um, beautiful during Christmas when we're trying to do these Christmas kinds of things. Um, and so it was more like we would have, uh, palm trees and, and something like that, and then the shade trees, you know, the elevations of our, uh, the new retail that, that came in. And is this enough money for some serious, um, tree planting?
It, I'm figuring it's about 200 trees, not serious tree planting, but it's enough to get a start.
Okay.
Um, but, once again, the, the effort is to do, to touch the bases and leave as much possible for the streets.
Um, and, and because, one of the things is that we have all this money that we need to take another looksee, um, from the redevelopment dissolution, um, because, I mean, I think some of that's dated, maybe we could put some of that money towards the street planning.
We, we do have some money, I, and I don't know how much, left over from bond proceeds and redevelopment, yes.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Allen, and then Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. The only thing that I want to mention is, we've, for a long time, we've had some serious concerns about the need for the infrastructure upgrades on, uh, down around Michigan Avenue, Pico Van Buren, that always floods and we get the rains. Not to mention that we need to upgrade those, that infrastructure, just to get that project, Commerce Way, finished, put in and get that, which, you know, that whole project, once it's completed, it's going to just be a revenue pumping stream for us, you know, and, but we have to get the basics first, and so I'm wondering, are we considering any of that need with any of this excess money that we've got? You know, that area for that infrastructure?
We're not, not specifically applying it to Commerce Way. The, the application will be to the streets, as you said, Pico, De Berry, Michigan, the ones that are in there and are really end up being the bottom end of our flood control, where the streets end up being flood control, and are so washed out and destroyed now that we need to go back and replace those pieces. So with that replacement, we can get back to where we can manage that, that water flow on the street.
Okay, but, I, I mean, I do like what I see here, you know, the, what you've listed out here, and there are these real needs here, and I agree with, with Councilmember Robles and you about the tree canopy and, and the benefits of that, so I don't want to, you know, talk that down any, but we, we've talked for a long time about that need for that infrastructure upgrade down there, and I just don't want us to forget about it or lose sight of it.
Mayor Protem?
You know, I don't know how many times public work trucks have been brought to our attention. I thought we voted for electric truck last time with public work trucks, and then I thought we voted for another truck. Every time I turn around, we're voting for trucks, but we still had the same truck we bought from Loma Linda, so what's going on with our prior votes? I thought we allocated funds for, I think, something's popping in my mind, 60 to 65,000 for one truck.
Um, I know there was one truck, as far as I know, several years ago, that was an electric hybrid, that had some aftermarket changes done to it, that is no longer supported by the manufacturer. So every time that goes in, it is thousands of dollars to do the repairs. The dealership won't do it, and the aftermarket people keep pointing to the dealership, so we end up going to independent mechanics to, uh, work, work across that. So it, it's essentially a, a money pit we're pouring maintenance, maintenance dollars into to maintain.
Really? Well, that's the first I heard of that. That's a shame, because it was, what, about 60, 65,000, you know, for that truck?
That's, that's probably a fair guess, yeah.
And that was the truck we-
Yeah, so that was just my concern. Every time I see something, it's requests for public work trucks and what's going on with our fleet, you know? All right, thank you.
Okay. Further questions at this time? All right, so you know, are there any requests to speak? Oh, you did have it up. Plant was in the way, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wilson?
Is it my turn? Okay, so-
Do you have a question, Councilmember?
I don't want to, I don't want to water all over your palm trees there, Councilwoman Robles, but, uh, S, what is it? No, one of the agencies that reports on this kind of stuff talked about, uh, that the city of San Diego has just gotten itself in a big old myth with their locals, because they are out chopping down all the palm trees in one of their beautification districts because of exactly what the city manager was concerned about. Unfortunately, they, they do okay when they first get put in, although they are a little bit scary when you put them in, because there's a high mortality rate with palm trees. But then after that, uh, they're such a high maintenance issue, and, uh, they get dirty fast, that they're now removing them, and there's, of course, a move afoot within the public to try to oppose it, but they're not going to be able to do it, because they literally went out there and cut a bunch of them down and then put the public notice out. So that's how adamant they were about chopping down the, the palm trees. And it's just in one of our, like SCGA or one of those that talks about it, so.
But there's, there's a place for everything, and I think we can find a place for the, the, the right pieces to keep-
Four, four of them.
Four, four of them?
I, I have three, you can have three quee palms, I'll donate.
Okay, so we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this item? Now that we're talking about trees. Bobby Forbes?
Thank you. So, hooray for changing the signs in town. We did this, remember when we went from the green signs that just said the words to the little logo, to the blue signs, and they sold the gold signs? So it doesn't really make you much money, but it makes the community happy. A lot of people have them in their yards and in their garages, and I, I would like to add that, if that was a possibility, for changing out the signs. And a big hooray for me to get more deputies or any extra sheriff's patrol with this money. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This has been a four-year thing to try and get an extra deputy in town. I didn't think it was ever going to happen. Johan Gallo and others have been very active in trying to get this done. I would love it if we can get them some extra help in town. I wonder, do the signs include street sweeping and speed limit signs when you go to change them out, or will it just be street signs with the names of the streets? And then, um, palm trees get rats. If you go walk underneath a palm tree, you're going to have all kinds of skeletons underneath it, you have birds of prey living in them. I had 12 date palms on my property at one time when I bought it. There are no more date palms on my property. They are dangerous. I'm sure there are some that might work, but please do a lot of research as to which ones you're going to get, because, besides the maintenance for the community or for the staff, they can be trouble for the neighborhood, and they pick up little dogs, too. Um, I think that's it, but my most, the thing I'm happiest about is any kind of assistance to the sheriff's department from these funds. Thank you.
So, I, I don't want to break your heart, but I want to clarify that these funds will be used to, used to pay the sheriff's current fees and offset those costs. There's, there's no additional law enforcement built in this. So, but, sorry, but it's one of those, we can keep trying, we can find other means. And one of the, the primary reasons for not doing this, in this, this is one-time money. And if we, if we add a sheriff as part of this money, at some point, this money's going to run out, and then we have to get rid of a sheriff. And then the expectation is there, and we're going to be more unhappy getting rid of than not having. So, but, but I do want to, do want to find that, and for the rest, we'll certainly work, work with you. The signs, street signs, traffic signals, stop signs, um, and then we'll see how far it goes into street sweeping signs and the rest, but we, we need to get those, the, the missing ones replaced and the faded ones repaired.
So I've noticed lately, this is kind of on the subject, I'll be brief, kids are going around and they're switching the signs to turn in the polls, so the streets don't have the right designation right now in certain neighborhoods, a lot right now.
I, I noticed that, there's others that are missing, um, and I know it was really cute back in the olden days to get, find a street sign with your girlfriend's name on it and present it to her. So, um, I'm, I'm sure that's happened here, too.
Well, you can sell them.
What's your wife's name? What's your wife's name?
Yeah, that's it, you won't find that street sign.
Okay, any more requests to speak from the public on this item?
No matter, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We'll close this public comment, and we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further discussion.
Uh, Mayor, um, I'd like to move staff recommendations. I make a motion for all staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further discussion? All right, may we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
And Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item 14, which is the 2021, '22, mid-year and end of budget review. Mr. Terry Shea.
Uh, Your Honorable Mayor, Member City Council, City Staff, uh, I want to thank, um, the whole city staff, because they all got involved in this mid-year review, especially Christine, worked through all the expenses, went through, did the projection. I had the easy job with the revenues, so that was easy. I, I forgot how to sit down a few minutes ago, and I sprained my neck, so I'm struggling a little here, so. All right, do we have the clicker? All right, so what we have here is the mid-year review and year-end budget review. Where do you click at? Where do you aim it? All the right one, okay. So our goal, number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through continuous monitoring of the revenues and expenditures against the approved budget allocations. Purpose of the review is to look at where we're at mid-year, and then if there's any proposed budget adjustments at this point. This is where the Christmas tree's going to go, roughly around there somewhere, so.
Palm trees.
So as of January 31st, which we went through January 31st, general fund operating revenues received were $4,139,000, or about 48% of the approved budget of $8,654, which is good, because, um, sales tax, we're always two months behind, um, property tax, we just got our first payment. So being at 48, 50% at this time is, is a good sign. The general fund operating expenditures through January 31st were $3,617, which represents about 53% of the approved expenditures, which is also a good place to be. The salaries, which is one of our largest costs, are timely, but most accounts payable item are one to two months behind, because people don't bill us timely, so we're a good spot there. So with 58% of the fiscal year elapsed through January, this shows a positive result of about $340,000 against the expected budget of about 3.9 million. So approved budget was $8,654, expenditures were $6,822, and you remember, a lot of that was the two land sales, and so there was about a $50,000 surplus without the land sales. So monthly through January 2022, we're at $522,000. Uh, year-end projections. So our largest source of revenue is property taxes, so the approved budget was 4.4,194,000. Through January, 2.2 million, year-end projections of about 4.58. And the year-end projection numbers were provided by the San Diego counties, which they projected us to get. Uh, franchise fees were in good shape with those. Other permits, okay, sales tax will be over what we budgeted. Business license fees, a little bit over. Charges for services is down, because that's kind of the timing of the projects that come through. Fines and forfeitures were a little bit below. Use of money, the, the rates are still not, not good at all. And so everything else, wastewater receipts, we did receive, good news, the city of Colton is going to pay us, so we should get that soon, so. And then the expenditures, um, city council, under budget. Uh, city manager, right on track, city clerk, uh, city attorney, but there's been a lot of stuff going on, a lot of staff changes and, and, and some of the successor agency stuff that went over, that we weren't allowed to charge. Finance, none of my time's in there, I'm up with the city manager, so that's why we look so good. Uh, planning and development, part of that is, um, with the retirement of the planning director, so there's a little bit of savings there. Public works, we're a little bit under there, and then law enforcement, we're right on track with the budget. And then the non-departmental, there's some insurance costs that were a little higher and the OPEB, or the unfunded liability. So overall, um, year-end budget versus appropriation, that bottom number of 255, so we're in, in good shape, that's what we're projecting, expenditures under the budget. And so the approved budget, $8,654, revenues actually- And so the approved budget, $8,654,000, revenues actually through there and then we're projecting 9.27, so over budget on the revenues of about 623 and under budget on the expenditures of about 255. So if you guys have any questions at any time, please feel free. And then this is kind of a chart that Cynthia has provided in the past. Oh, sure, go ahead, sir.
In the, in the revenues side, it said charges for services, what is that?
That's like the public, or the building and planning, when people come to the counter.
You mean contracts, that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's all on.
That's specifically staff spending time and, and your revenues have to cover your costs, you're not really supposed to make a profit. And so this is kind of where we were at one point and we're slowly coming back and so I think at the end of 2021 we'll be right where the city needs to be, just above that, vulnerable into the sustainable, so. So any questions on any of the projections? And having Trevor now really helps get caught up because there's a lot of work for two people in the finance department to do, so we appreciate that. Yes, questions, sorry. Forgot there was one more slide. I'm suffering from a neck pain.
You want questions now or you have more?
I have no questions, so questions give to council, so.
All right, further questions of staff? Nope, you've done a good job. Are there any requests to speak on this item? You do have a question now.
I do have a question.
All right, Councilmember Wilson.
I see this eight, well, I'll see your $877,000 and, and, you know, well, let's call it 870K to the good, but what about the, the items that are similar to the accrued liability stuff like some of the, like that million, or $2,100,000 worth of ARP fees and the bond proceeds and some of the ghost funds that aren't in the general category? What are we really too good on those?
Most of the special revenue funds, like the gas tax, the RMRA and the Measure I, those have been spent in accordance with the budget and so we're right on track with those. The money that's left over from the bond proceeds, I have a schedule, but I don't have it with me, but that, that money is available. If you're talking about any of the liabilities for like the pension and the OPEB, those are pay-as-you-go, so those are planned.
I, I think this is interesting because there's two ways to look at accounting, I guess, and that is hard numbers and soft numbers and soft numbers are ordinarily disregarded, but they're in somebody's pocket because they know they're there. So if they're revenue sources and they're in the plus category, then they look pretty neat.
Yes, sir.
But then if they're in the negative category, then everybody looks at them and goes, eh, yeah, we know about that, kind of, kind of let it sit over in the bottom of the trashcan. But what I don't want to do is I don't want to get stuck in that kind of circumstance like we did in the past. What I'm a little bit worried about is our new projection showing that we're almost desperately down in the, in the red, but it's only, I mean, I, I don't remember us ever being in our initial, in our different reports, being in the red. We were pretty much static.
I think one, a couple of years ago during the recession is when, when it, when it got down there, yes, sir. But other than that, it's been good, so.
That's $300,000.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe, maybe we ought to revise our little deal here because the scale just doesn't look right.
It does look cool.
300 grand, we barely kind of touched the red, but now we're solidly in the red.
Yeah.
I didn't know we had that issue.
Yeah. It was just a couple of years ago. But yeah, you're right, it, it, we should scale this back and so.
And now we're looking at miraculously that we're in the 2021, we're talking about 100 grand to the good, but that's not what we were told. We're looking at $878,000 to the good.
Well, this only went to 2021, it didn't go to 2022, but that, what that is, is, is the, is.
That's the floating.
Yeah.
Yeah, the floating, in other words.
Right.
Some of the stuff isn't in, some of the stuff should be eventually.
Right.
So you're saying if it goes like it's supposed to.
Yes, sir.
By the end of the year, so I guess that's why I'm a little bit concerned about the label, because the label says basically versus what we think it's really going to be, but that's not what we really think it's going to be when we're 878 grand to the good.
We, we think, we, if things go planned out like they are, that we should add over 800,000 to the general fund.
Okay.
Yes.
I like that number better.
Right.
I like it better than that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll remember to delete this slide next January, so.
And then as long as we're, as long as we're not in those ghost areas where we have, we know one of our large liabilities is the accrued liability, the soft costs that old employees and so on accumulated versus the CalPERS mystery meal.
We, we have some items coming to the council in May and June to address those issues and start putting some funds away and so we'll have that.
That's a good thing.
We have a audit client that's a 1230 and CalPERS puts out a tool to calculate your liability and we started running some of our other clients through it. Some of their liabilities have been cut in half and they went from liabilities to surpluses, so something is up with that, so I think our liability will, I mean, we have people reporting pension income as opposed to pension expense, so.
Wow.
Unless CalPERS has an air in that thing, we're, yeah, so.
Sounds like somebody's going to slap us in the tail end eventually.
But we are, we are going to address the OPEB and the pension and, and try to set some money aside in this next budget to start funding that and where we can earn more than the, like the 2% or the 1% investing public funds.
Well, I'd like the, the good to show the good and the, the bad to show the bad and bad hadn't been there for a long time. So I think, you know, it's nice to see the, the good way up there when we thought about a year and a half or two years ago that we were in, going to be in desperate straits. As it turned out, things didn't quite run that way, which is wonderful.
Yes.
It's a good, good thing. Anyway, and then I'm really concerned about having ghost numbers out there. For example, and I'll, then I'll shut up, but the, our big ticket items, we have contract items and we have non-contract items. I think we have to somehow show those things in a subcategory so us, when we're looking at them, we know the difference between, oh yeah, we contracted this much per year when we did the original bidding and then we need to be able to attach some of those non-contract items to specific tasks and determine whether they're going to be next year's thing or they're never, ever going to appear again. And the only, the only way I know that of is to create a subcategory so that, you know, like for example, the sheriffs, you know, they're a big ticket item for us. Attorneys, they're a big ticket item, some of our, our consultants are big ticket items, anything over about 200 grand, big, big ticket items. If we have an extra dollar that we're spending on non-contract stuff that's beyond what we assumed when we put our budget together, I think we need to know that for the next year.
Yeah, we, we can include a little more detail and, and like in the sheriff's department and, because that department is just one contract and the city attorney, I mean, we can.
Well, and it's a lot easier to do it that way than it is to take it apart.
Yeah, we could, we could add and, and go a little more detail on the expenses, but we, we did, we went through every expenditure account and we looked at it and we, we know the sheriff's contract, we estimated the overtime. So we look at all those and then we have whatever we spent to date, we projected and so we, we feel pretty confident in those big ticket items that we're on track.
That's a good thing.
I've been charging less each month, so make mine look.
I'd just like to be able to see it in the monthly for that matter.
Yeah, we could do.
Okay.
Yeah. What, the staff is kind of a little behind, only having two people and then, and so now with Trevor, we're, we caught up and we'll be caught up and you'll get the stuff more quickly, so.
Thank you.
I think I saw in the monthly reports that there was a contract report this time.
There is one every month, yeah.
Yeah, that was nice to see, thank you. All right, any further questions before I open? Okay, Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Allen.
Terry, question, you touched a little bit on it, the CalPERS liability. You said you're going to be doing that in the next report because my concern is, like that chart that just happened also where in the red, the way the stock market's going and how much it fell and I know we have a certain liability where the city has to pay so much for retirement, I mean, what do you think this is going to affect our budget if the stock market continues on the downtrend and how much we're going to be paying?
Well, usually, it usually takes a couple of years to hit CalPERS, so right now our rate is reasonable. It's the unfunded portion that's up to about 600,000, Christine, and that's the part we want to try to start funding and because the current rates are, are reasonable, I think we're a little over 10 for this next year, but it could have an effect and it could reverse what I just said earlier about that, but the unfunded portion, it could, it could affect that, so.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, if, if I may. So part of the CalPERS piece, just like we talked about paving roads, that's probably the, the second big, big expense hiding in the weeds and every dollar we save on paying off PERS is not just a dollar reduced in liability, it's a dollar reduced in interest that we pay on that. So it's like paying off a credit card. What we've done with this 800,000 this year and hopefully in, in this next cycle with the next budget year is be able to fund our, fund our reserves to the point that we can start using some of those reserves to pay off that liability. And Terry has, you know, a couple of programs that work with that to fund that, so that's, not right now, but this is right on our horizon to start putting some money against this liability and start paying that off because not only do we save the, the liability, we save that interest, which gives us more, more flexibility in the year-to-year budget for us to, to do things like, you know, buy palm trees or pave roads.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen? Nope, good, all right. We are good. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council and we are looking at receiving and filing. And so if I could have a motion to receive and file, that would be nice.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. May we have a vote please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hesse?
Yes.
And Mayor McNebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so our next one is requests for future agenda items, but we do not have any requests tonight. City Council Communications will begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. On April 20, I went to the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force meeting and the subject that dominated the entire meeting was SB 1383 and so real quick, the takeaways are that this is the year that it's being implemented, has to be implemented in its entirety by the end of this year and that there's going to be, you know, an added can for residents, rate increase for that can to be serviced. There, the recommendation is for municipalities to start educating right away and the reason is because each city must create their own ordinances with enforcement mechanisms and the county will have a first reading on theirs, maybe their work, their goal is to have it by May at one of the supervisors' meetings, but it will be the responsibility of all the cities in the county, you know, and in the state for that matter, to, like, like I said, to create their own ordinances and enforcement mechanisms for those ordinances. But this, this, I can't quite grasp the stuff that comes out of Sacramento sometimes. This is so ridiculously hard to implement and to maintain and they're, so they're telling us that, for example, tell the residents to use plastic bags and put the waste in the plastic bag and then take the plastic bag and put it in the new can that they're going to get and then the new truck that's going to service that new can is going to take that can to another place where a bunch of people are going to wade through that to get those plastic bags out of there because they're not compostable. The idiocy of that and now there is, this year, a SB 1046, a ban on non-compostable bags. This bill would prohibit stores from distributing non-compostable plastic produce bags and require produce bags to be reusable or made from paper. And yet, now they're going to ban them from doing that, but yet they want us to use plastic bags to put our compost and organic waste in. Some of the lessons learned are, are, see, they did a beta study in Rancho Cucamonga on this. They, 1,200 homes were in May of last year, May of 2021 it was started and they went for a year and they supplied them with the can and they did the pickup and all that. And now, I've never weighed, there won't be a weighing, they're not going to weigh the cans, it's a flat fee, but for this beta study, they did weigh the cans just to see how people will, and these, these 1,200-plus households are supposed to have been briefed and educated and you're part of this study, right? The average per week was 38 pounds of, of food waste or organics and the spikes are during the holidays and most of the people, when, when they were told about it, they wanted to participate, but through a lack of education, one of the, obviously this must have been an issue because it made it into the report, many residents needed guidance regarding the type of clear plastic bags to use, again, and, and it's telling them, saying they should be told that they can use examples such as these, because they have to be clear and they can be a produce bag or a Ziploc bag. And that the term organics should not be used even though that's what we're collecting is organic products because many, many of the residents in the beta study were throwing away perfectly acceptable food waste because it was, it wasn't labeled organically grown and they thought that because this is a, a collection of organic waste, that it meant organically grown waste. And so there again, there's, there's that whole thing with the proper education and all that stuff. So the bottom line though, that I think that's important for us is, is that we need to get and make sure and understand that it's incumbent on us to, that we're going to have to enforce this and, and nobody's going to like it. It's just going to be the biggest pain in the butt for everyone except for the ones who sit up there in Sacramento and think this junk up. That's all I got to say about that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember.
And that's my report for the last two weeks.
Councilmember Doug Wilson?
I'd like to say that I attended a water update meeting that I had scheduled on my papers and I'd like to say that I actually went there at the right date and the right time, but unfortunately I, it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
So I will report on that. Other than that, I have no other, other than my coyote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
I don't have a report, there was a Zoom meeting with the promoters, Live Nation of the Raves, but I just want to offer a couple of things. They claim that they had the city look at some measurements of the noise and that there was no exceeding of the noise. the noise. The problem, because I looked at all the stuff afterwards, they put a measurement on my yard, and yeah, the day they measured, they stayed within the, well, under any nuisance. But on later ones, and I stayed home that weekend, and I used an app that's pretty accurate, and they exceeded the noise level consistently through the evening. And it's kind of interesting how they are able to go down and keep it low, and then they go up. There's a pattern to it. Also, my husband was out because they didn't put any measurements. So the city manager had them do that on the second day of the last rave. And the gentleman that they had out there was, and some neighbors came out, you know, concerned about the noise. And the gentleman said that there's noise that comes directly through my property, goes across the street, and, and all the way to Moreno Valley, making noise that they haven't been able to mitigate. You know, and I appealed to the city manager at its time that we, we meet in closed session on, on this subject. And also that day, the reason I missed it, my fourth great-grandchild came into the world. And I was going to park to get on the Zoom meeting, and I was easily distracted and forgot all about it. But we got Adrian Jacob Pena Castro. And he was also, he was born on my mother's birthday, so that was quite a treat. And so it was an interesting day, a lot of fun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem Bell Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Sylvia, another grandchild. Well, the safest place in Grand Terrace last week with the police officer there wasn't a donut shop, it was Woody's. So it was a great turnout. I think you might have to get a bigger venue place for it because we had so many people there. But it was really nice. And then, you know, topics was talk about Cal's Gate was one of the questions, you know, about the recent events that are going on there. What can the sheriffs and the city do about that? So I know Lieutenant Lane's looking into issues on that, and what, you know, the sheriff's department can do that to curtail, you know, some of the activities. It's unfortunate that stuff does happen there, you know? You have a great venue for kids, and then unfortunately, some bad people get in there, and they're not any kids, you know, they're adults acting like fools. And then, you know, one of the questions was brought about the rave, and the gentleman was concerned because, like me, can't hear, but we could feel it, you know, what is the sheriff's department doing about that? And we talked about, you know, issues. And I think the city manager brought up, you know, that they're looking at ways to, you know, do studies on that. And then thinking of homelessness, you know, I asked the whole program, I go, well, you know, what about homeless? And he asked me, well, how many do you think we have? I go, I don't know, seven. I was close, but I was over. We have about four permanent residents here. But we do have issues, and, you know, that's an ongoing thing, you know, with the sheriff's whole program tries to take care of it. And, you know, there's a lot of resources out there in the county, but just getting the people to take advantage of the resources. Because we also had a county mental health there, you know, I was talking to them, and they have a program also, and we talked about this before COVID, was about vaping. And there's two young ladies that are ambassadors at the high school to try to curtail vaping for students. So I gave my information. I told them I'd like to sit down and talk to them. So it's having a big issue, and the vaping and what they're putting into the vape and what's doing an effect of the kids. And of course, then there's, of course, all the questions about crime. You know, we're still pretty safe here. But a lot of people do come in here, you know, I know, you know, I've been working in Sacramento for the Cali converters and stuff. And I don't know if you even engrave them, if it's going to help, because they'll probably still steal them. I don't know. Unless you put a thing on there where the tires just deflate and smash them, I think they're still going to get it. But, you know, I know preventative things that to help, and, you know, the lighting, and, you know, watching out for the neighbors, you know, you know, just keep an eye, you know, know your environment, know your surroundings, and then make that phone call. You know, don't put it on nine-two-three-one-three, hey, I saw somebody walking by my house right now, you know, call, you know, nine-one-one. You know, let somebody know, you know, we can take care of it right there. That's all to the sheriffs, you know, I was outside when they had a home invasion a couple of weeks ago. And I thought the helicopter was there to help me put the canvas on my trailer, but he wasn't. But, you know, they were, they responded pretty fast. And same thing with Cal's Gate, you know, when call goes up for help, you're not just getting a sheriff, you're getting, we had Colton PD, the CHP, everybody came out. And thank God, nobody was seriously hurt because we do have priors in that place. And like I said, it's not a bad thing for the, for the business. But, you know, I know last time, when they did have the shooting, everybody ran to Stater Brothers and all this other stuff. So it does a domino effect on the whole city. So, you know, hopefully Lieutenant Lane, something will get resolved on that. So make that place a safe environment so people can take their kids. And I, I know, the city manager said back in the old days, well, you know, there was always issues, you know, back in the old days, you got in fistfights, we didn't bring out guns and everything else. So you settled your difference, shook hands, went back in. But I know it's a great, there's a lot of family memories at that place, you know, I don't want to see it go downhill. But I know you guys are being proactive, so I appreciate it. Appreciate all the time you did during that coffee and the cop. And the residents like it, you know, they really like it. They like hearing, they like to be firsthand and talking to you. Because you do have a lot of support here. And all those first responders have a lot of support with the residents. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Congratulations, Sylvia, to you and your family. And I did enjoy the coffee with the cop. There were quite a few law enforcement representatives there. That was pretty impressive. Thank you very much for that. And I did like the updates that you gave, especially when you, when you discussed a little bit about how our sheriff contract worked, you know, talking about the response that we get. Because so often residents here, we have one, one police officer. That's what they hear, we have one police officer. So I'm just wondering how they look at our budget and the amount that we have on our contract versus one police officer. So, I mean, that, that's something to take into account if you have any deputies that seem to be having a rough day because somebody's saying, why didn't you get here soon enough? And they just say, well, you know, there's only one of us on duty right now. That doesn't go over so well. So just something to think about. I'd love it if you would come up with some public service announcements for the residents so that they can look at themselves as first line of defense. And, and think about things before they do that, such as, you know, if you're going to leave your car out on the driveway, don't leave anything inside of it that somebody would like to take. I mean, it's simple things like that. But, but the more somebody tells you about it, the more apt you are to change your habits. And it is, and it is better for you. Anyway, thank you. That's all I have. See, we will go to our city manager. Do you have any communications for us?
Just real briefly, we've spent the last two days working on the homeless camp there at Barton Road where the guard rail is taken out. We figured it'd be about two days. We have at least three more days to get that out of there. We, so far, we've hauled out twenty yards of trash. And we're looking at at least, at least another forty yards of trash to come out of there. So, and we've, we've, I think we've displaced our, our allotted four homeless, or seven homeless, however many they are, and a handful of Colton homeless as well. So now our challenge is to make sure that they don't find new places to settle. So we will be as disruptive as possible to their, their camping habits and help them get the help that they need. But we are making, you know, this is a monumental project to get that, that mess cleaned up. And it's, it's about time.
Thank you for working on that.
I was just wondering, the homeless camp was in the guidelines for the green waste, you know, Mr. Allen gave to us.
They have organic and unwasted food.
There, there are buckets of organic waste.
Yeah, I bet. So I was just wondering if we had a special containers for those.
They're called toilets.
Okay. How about, how about we end there? We have no closed session tonight. And so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May, May 10, 2022, at 6:00 PM right here. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to our city clerk's office. And the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.